We're going to go ahead and get started, everybody. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The planning board members that are here today are David Rosacker, Michael Pate, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Christine Collins, our vice chair, and I am Greg Rosacka chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fenslau, planning director, Eric England, acting assistant planning director, Mike Carter, acting current planning manager, Robert LaRocco, planning board administrator, Jennifer Taylor of the city law department, and Lisa Agans, our recording secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the planning board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, enter it in on the sign-in sheet, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record, and enter in on the sign-in sheet. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the city council for another public hearing and final disposition by the city council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the city council. Lastly, upon the advice of the law department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the planning department so that they are made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to the board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. With that said, I'll get started with the cases on the consent agenda. Agenda item number one, case C-10-19-245, C-12-19-246. Applicant Walnut Grove LLC. It is on consent for layover. The request: Final plat approval of Hanover Falls Center, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R-6, and MU. Location: Northwest of 156th and State Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 11, case C-10-20-86, C-12-20-87. Applicant Charleston Homes LLC. It is on consent for approval. Request preliminary plat approval of Arbor View lots 382 through 641, Outlots I through N, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R-4. Location: Southeast of 216th and Fort Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, we will remove that. Okay, thank you. Agenda item number 12, case C-10-20-88, C-12-20-89. Applicant Bennington Public Schools. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat approval of 168 Snowden Commons, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R-4. Location: Northwest of 168th Street and Rachel Snowden Parkway. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 13, case C-10-8-220, C-12-8-221. Applicant BHI Development Inc. It is on for approval. Request revised preliminary plat approval of Kensington Park, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location: Northwest of 204th and Q Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 18, case C-10-20-101, C-7-20-102. Applicant Terry Patterson. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to R-5 with approval of a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R-5 district. Location: 3737 Lake Street. Would anyone want this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C-10-20-103. Applicant Matt Burke. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from DR to R-5. Location: 4723 South 49th Ave. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 20, case C-10-20... Oh, it's been pulled off of the... All right, I'm sorry. All right. So that is no longer on consent. Okay. Agenda item number 23, case C-8-20-107. Applicant Custom Concrete Designs Inc. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow a construction yard in the DS District. Property is located within an IC... An ACI-one overlay district. I'll get it out sooner or later. Location: 1804 Paul Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 25, case C-8-20-109, C-8-20-109A Gold Aquatic Center. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation and outdoor sports and recreation in the GI District. Location: 7505 North 101st Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. The final consent item is... Case... Agenda item number 26, case C-7-20-110. Applicant Bennington Public Schools. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R-4 District with a waiver to Section 55-186 height to allow a 38-foot tall building. Location: West of 168th Street and Military Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. That ends the consent cases. Do we have a motion for the cases on consent for approval?
Motion to approve cases 12, 13, 18, and 19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Karns?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mission approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent cases for layover?
It's a layover of then items 1, 23, 25, and 26.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karns?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, anyone that was here for those cases that were just voted on, there will be no further action taken today. You are welcome to stay, or you are free to leave. The next four cases are administrative agenda items, so there will be no opportunity for public testimony. Agenda item number two, case C-10-20-21, C-12-20-22. Applicant 85 CB's LLC. Request final plat approval of Flanagan Point, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R-4, and MU. Location: Northeast of 180th and Fort Street. Eric, may we hear from the city?
Yeah, so this final plat of Flanagan Point came... The preliminary came before you in April meeting and then approved by city council on May 19th. The layout is very similar to the preliminary plat. They did address the Main Street component within Outlot C on the multifamily lot. There are a few items with the mixed-use development agreement that will have to be addressed prior to forwarding to city council, but staff is comfortable with the request. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, R-4, and MU subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement, and approval of the final plat subject to the two conditions prior to forwarding to city council.
Do we have any further comment or questions? Do we have a motion?
I motion for approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, R-4, and MU subject to a submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement, and approval of the final plat subject to meeting the two conditions in the recommendation report prior to hearing by city council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate? Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karns?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on, agenda item number three, case C-10-18-219, C-12-18-220. Applicant Falcone Land Development. Request final plat approval of Vistancia lots 301 through 512, Outlots J through L, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG and R-5 to DR, R-4, and R-5. Location: Northwest of 210th and Fort Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Well, I'll take that...
Oh, that's right. We're on administrative...
All right, so this next phase of Vistancia includes 83 acres. They'll be plating 212 single-family lots, one lot for... One outlot for a park, two outlots for drainage purposes. The preliminary plat was recommended for approval at the December planning board meeting and approved by city council on March 17th. There are a few items that will... Minor items that will need to be addressed prior to forwarding to city council, including a noxious weed plan letter and Douglas County emergency siren letter, as well as a few notes on the final plat. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG and R-5 to DR, R-4, and R-5. Approval of the final plat subject to addressing the five conditions in the recommendation report prior to city council.
Any additional comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from AG and R-5 to DR, R-4, and R-5, and approval of the final plat subject to addressing the five conditions in the staff report prior to forwarding the request to city councils.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Karns?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on, agenda item number four, case C-10-18-15, C-12-18-16. Applicant New West Farm Holdings LLC. Request final plat approval of West Farm Replat 7, formerly West Farm Replat 4, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from R-4, R-7, and MU to R-4, R-7, and MU, along with a major amendment to the mixed-use development plan for West Farm. Location: Southwest of 144th Street and West Dodge Road. May we hear from the city?
Yeah, so this final plat was previously before the planning board about two years ago in March of 2018. It did not proceed to city council after that time, and in that two-year time lapse, there have been some additional mixed-use minor amendments. There have been three additional plats. So the city believed that it was important to come back through to account for all of those changes in that two-year timeframe, to come back before the board before proceeding to city council. So that's why it's under the name West Farm Replat 7 rather than... Previously was known as Replat 4. The layout is very similar to when the board saw it two years ago. To recap, this is 40 lots, 35 which is to be zoned mixed-use, four lots R-7, and then one lot is R-4. There have been some minor modifications. Included with the plat, there is dedication of right-of-way, including the off-ramp from West Dodge Road, the row, and a few others. There will be... There will need to be a few updates to the mixed-use development agreement before proceeding to city council, but staff is recommending approval of rezoning from R-4, R-7, and MU to R-4, R-7, and MU subject to submittal of an acceptable major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement, and approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Any comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the rezoning from R-4, R-7, and MU to R-4, R-7, and MU subject to submittal of an acceptable major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council, and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat approval and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding on to city council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Karns?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number five, case C-10-19-216, C-12-19-217. Applicant Lauren Johnson, Celebrity Homes Omaha. Request final plat approval of Deer Crest, a subdivision outside city limits, along with rezoning from AG to R-4. Location: Southeast of 114th and State Streets. May we hear from the city?
Yeah, so Deer Crest had previously come before the board back in January for the first-phase final plat. Before proceeding to city council, the developer decided that rather than a phased development, they would come back and do a final plat for what was proposed for both phases. So the final plat is for the entire site and includes 313 single-family lots and seven outlots. There is continued coordination with the city, public works, and parks, and planning departments with the applicant regarding the sewer alignment, in that it not go through the park directly to the south. There was some progress on this late last week, and it's possible that there will be two single-family lots that are eliminated. The report does not touch on that, but we will continue those coordinations before making sure there's an acceptable sewer alignment before proceeding to city council. But just wanted to mention, there might be two less single-family lots. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R-4. Approval of the final plat subject to conditions of preliminary plat approval and addressing the two conditions in the recommendation report prior to city council.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve rezoning from AG to R-4. And approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and addressing the two conditions noted in the staff report prior to forwarding the request to city council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karns?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, that ends the administrative part of the meeting. We'll move on to agenda item number six, case C-3-20-83. Applicant City Planning on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of the HNHC Central Park TIF redevelopment project plan. Location: 3832 Saratoga Street, 3825 Brown Street, 3806 Camden Ave., 3930 Camden Ave., 4123 Camden Ave., 5120 North 41st Street, 5110 North 40th Street, 5118 North 40th Street, 3815 Fort Street, 4004 Grand Avenue, and 4006 Grand Avenue. And Don, you're presenting.
Yeah, Don Seaton, on behalf of the Omaha City Planning Department. The HNHC is Holy Name Housing Corporation. They're the applicants for this project. It's a tax increment financing request. It's an affordable housing development involving 11 vacant single-family lots. Holy Name intends to construct 11 new single-family homes. They're the sites shown in yellow here. The large intersection at the top is Fontanelle Boulevard and Sorensen Parkway, so they're all kind of grouped together just south of that intersection. For-sale units for income-qualified homebuyers. It's a Lytech project, low-income housing tax credits. Holy Name's project is about $3 million, a little bit more than $3 million for the total project. They're requesting $150,000 in TIF support. Project meets the criteria of our TIF program, complies with our city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Please give your name and address, sir.
Mike Golly, 4324 Fort Street, Executive Director of Holy Name Housing. Certainly willing to answer any questions you have concerning these 11 homes. The homes will... Many of them will look... Let's see, how do I do that? There we go. Most of the homes will look like that way, brick wainscote in the front, two-story homes. A few of the homes will be a single... Single-level ranch-style house. Got any questions I'd ask to those?
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karns?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number seven, case C-3-19-88. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request approval of a substantial amendment to the 2019 Consolidated Action Plan. Location: City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Hi, Bill Lucash, City of Omaha Planning Department. Thank you so much for the time today. We received notice from HUD, United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, in March that we would receive about $2.8 million of community development block grant CV funds and about $1.4 million of emergency solutions grant CV funds. Those funds are intended to be used for relief of COVID-19-related issues in the community, whether it be housing, or finances, or whatever. CDBG is intended for LMI clients, low- and moderate-income clients. ESG funds are more for shelter operations and people experiencing homelessness or who are near homeless. So today, I would like to present to you the plan on how the City of Omaha proposes to deploy these funds into the community. This first sheet here, and I've learned my lesson not to roll up pieces of paper and stick them in my pocket because they are wrinkled, shows some of the criteria that we followed when deciding which of the applicants that we would like to fund. We received 22 or 23 applicants for CDBG funding, all very good applications, some stronger than others, and about 11 or 12 applications for ESG funds. Won't go into too much detail about this, as you can see it right here, but the three on the bottom were things that we took very seriously in our evaluation of the applications. One is the consideration of how it fits in with the focus areas of the mayor's COVID-19 task force. Of course, our HUD requested that with these funds that all entitlement communities consult with the Douglas County... Excuse me. With health departments throughout the country, and we consulted with the Douglas County Health Department on these selections. And then also HUD did issue some guidance on example programs that we could fund. Starting at the top of this page... I'll try to make that fit as best I can. So at the top, with CDBG funds, $1.5 million will go towards Match, their rent and mortgage assistance program. That program will help on an interim basis with families that are having a hard time meeting rent or mortgage needs. It also includes case management. This was our number-one priority in our community based on not only the mayor's COVID-19 task force, but also the Douglas County Health Department. Well, maybe not their number one, but it was in their top three. And independent research has shown that this is one of the most needed things, programs that we can offer to the community right now. North End Tele Services, they are going to receive $250,000. They picked up agreements, contracts with the Nebraska Department of Health and the Nebraska Department of Labor. Both agencies were experiencing drop calls because of the number of phone calls that they were receiving. Excuse me, pardon me. They reached out to North End Tele Services, and they are providing support. Where these funds will be used is to help create and retain jobs, to get people from their house to work if they don't have transportation, and other services that North End Tele Services uses to benefit their employees to create and retain jobs. It's an economic development activity. It is supported by the Omaha Chamber of Commerce. The next one as well, the Nebraska Enterprise Fund, has a program to support small and micro businesses with financial support if they have not already... If they do not receive PPP or other funding from the federal government during this time. One World Food Delivery, they are going to provide food to households that are... Have tested positive for COVID-19. There are quite a few families and households that they serve. I think they deliver over 900 meals per week right now, so they will receive... So they will receive, I'm sorry about that, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to continue those services. Douglas County Health Department identified mental health as one of the main issues that they were concerned about right now. And so the next two, Urban Indian Health Coalition and Charles Drew Health Clinic, are both providing those services to the communities for residents throughout Douglas County, specifically in the City of Omaha. And Charles Drew is getting a little bit of extra money for testing supplies if they can acquire them. No More Empty Pots, they are doing food packaging, and they work with several nonprofit organizations who deliver food to seniors and other households and families throughout the community that are quarantining or are forced to quarantine. Excuse me. We did not fund any food production. The Food Bank has stated that they have plenty of food. It's just a matter of getting those foods out to families who can't get to the food itself. And then ISC, the Intercultural Senior Center, is one of those organizations that is delivering food to residents of Omaha and Douglas County. Emergency Solutions Grant Funds, these are funds that, with the Metropolitan Area Continuum of Care for the Homeless, we consult with them on how we should allocate these funds into the community. They are broken down into different categories, such as emergency shelter operations, rapid rehousing, street outreach, and prevention, homelessness prevention. And I won't go through a lot of details right here, but these are the allocations for those different operations for those organizations doing good work in our community. We are keeping a little bit, fifty-nine thousand or two percent of the CDBG CV funds for administrative costs by the city so that those can be used for personal protective equipment as our staff goes out to the community and continues to work, not only to protect our staff, but to protect the people that we work with. We are not keeping any of the administrative costs. Oops, sorry about that. There's my wrinkly page. We are not keeping any of the admin dollars, even though it shows it here, for the ESG funds. Those funds will be given to Metropolitan Area Continuum of Care for the Homeless so they can acquire PPE and then distribute that to the different service providers, the shelters and the other organizations. So with that, I'll answer any questions you have. Tried to go through that quickly. I know you have a big crowd today.
Thank you, Bill. We had a good discussion upstairs in the pre-meeting. Are there any additional questions or comments for Bill? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, did you want to add?
Nope, just recommend approval.
Do we have a motion? We have approval? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on, agenda item number eight, case C-three dash twenty dash eighty-two. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of an amendment to the land use element and transportation element of the city's master plan. Location: City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Eric, are you presenting?
Yep, I'll take that one on behalf of the Planning Department and the City of Omaha. This proposed amendment would make changes to the land use and transportation elements of the city's master plan. Within both of those elements, there is text that currently discusses density corridors as they exist on West Center Road, West Dodge Road, and West Maple Road. The purpose of these density corridors are to develop the necessary densities to ultimately support transit options. This amendment would change the text within both those elements as well as the future land use map. Currently, those density corridors go from West Center Road, one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth Street, to two-hundred-and-sixteenth. West Dodge Road from one-hundred-and-twentieth Street to two-hundred-and-tenth Street. West Maple Road, one-hundred-and-forty-fourth Street to two-hundred-and-tenth Street. This amendment would extend all three of those corridors to Interstate six-eighty, so a little bit further to the east. Additionally, it would add two-hundred-and-fourth Street from Harrison Street to West Maple Road as a fourth density corridor. At the time of the master plan and when these elements were put in place, two-hundred-and-fourth Street was primarily not in the city zoning jurisdiction. It was either part of City of Elkhorn or Douglas County zoning. What this does is it would allow unlimited multifamily units within a quarter mile, which already exists for the three existing corridors, but it would also add that for two-hundred-and-fourth Street and then the extension of those existing three all the way to Interstate six-eighty and to the west. We believe these amendments will facilitate transit supportive growth beyond the existing density corridor policy designations. At the same time, will facilitate redevelopment potential as you get closer to the I-six-eighty corridor. So that's all I have for now.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Do we have a motion? Well, I'm sorry.
Just recommend approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number nine, case C-nineteen dash twenty dash eighty-four. Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of the two thousand and twenty annexation package. Hillsborough Estates SID four-two-one, West Dodge Hills SID four-five-one, Greyhawk Two SID four-six-eight, West Hampton Park Lindbrook SID four-eight-nine, Manchester Ridge SID four-nine-five, along with a small portion of Andreessen Meadows SID five-five-five, Elkhorn Highland Ridge SID five-oh-two, West Dodge Point and adjacent land SID five-three-eight, Pacific West Tuscan Ridge SID five-three-nine. Location: City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. And Troy, you're presenting.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Again, my name's Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, City of Omaha Mayor's Office, here to present the two thousand and twenty annexation package. I'll spend just a few minutes explaining the process and how we've arrived here we, where we are today, mainly for the benefit of the general public here. I know you all have been a part of this before, but specifically, the City of Omaha Mayor's Office works each year to try to put together an annexation package to accomplish three primary goals. Number one is to eliminate islands within the city's corporate limits. Number two, that the annexation package must be revenue-positive for the city. And number three, that the annexation package does not compromise public safety. We go through a very systematic, very analytical approach. We receive numbers from the SIDs. By the end of the year, December thirty-first, beginning in January, we start analyzing all of those SIDs and their financial health. We begin with a comprehensive list. Currently, there's one-hundred-and-twenty-seven SIDs. We begin by eliminating those SIDs that are neither adjacent nor adjacent plus one to the city's existing corporate limits. We then start eliminating SIDs based on whether or not the SID has a levy greater than sixty, net debt greater than three million, or a debt ratio greater than four percent, not excluding SIDs that generate sales, restaurant, and/or hotel tax. And ultimately, this year, we came down to a short list of twenty-eight SIDs. That list was distributed amongst the city departments for a full-service evaluation. That full-service evaluation allows us to identify existing needs within the SIDs or adjacent to those SIDs and what the cost is for extending essential city services to those SIDs over the next ten years. As a result of that full-service evaluation, we've identified eight SIDs in adjacent areas that we're putting before you for recommendation for approval today. Those SIDs include Hillsborough Estates, West Dodge Hills, Greyhawk Two, West Hampton Park, Manchester Ridge, Elkhorn Highland Ridge, West Dodge Point in adjacent area, and Pacific Street West. The package includes approximately five-hundred-and-ninety-seven-point-five acres of land. The package will bring in an approximately two-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-eight new residents. This is based on two thousand and ten census data. The city will see an increase of approximately four-hundred-and-forty-eight million dollars in new valuation. Also included in your packets today is a ten-year financial projection based on the revenue and the expenses and the debt that we're assuming. I won't belabor that here right now. That's a lot of numbers, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you might have on that. Also, we've identified that on average, the property tax within each of these SIDs, the property owner will see a reduction in their tax obligation. On average, about five-hundred dollars per hundred-thousand-dollar valuation. Public safety will not be compromised. There are approximately five-point-six acres of parkland that's included in this annexation package, including one neighborhood park, more specifically, Picot Park, and a couple of trails. There's only twenty-six lane miles that are being added as part of this package. And we've identified all of those roads as being in good condition. None of them are unimproved. Again, all areas, if not already served, will immediately receive all essential city services, including fire, police, solid waste removal, street maintenance, and snow removal. So following recommendation for approval from you here today, this item is scheduled to be introduced to City Council on June sixteenth, with the public hearing on June twenty-third, and a final reading and vote on July fourteenth with an effective date of July twenty-eighth. With that being said, that concludes my report. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy? Just real quick, I think for the record, just important for maybe the people in the audience in particular here, because it's in our report. But it appears that every subdivision or SID that's being annexed will have a decrease in their tax rates. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding that that's a reduction in their overall levy obligation. The City of Omaha does not assess property valuation. So whether or not your property valuation increased or decreased, that has no bearing on the City of Omaha. The City of Omaha does not have any impact on whether or how your property is assessed. What we do is we have a levy that will be imposed as part of the annexation that through the calculations that distributed, and we can answer any questions on any particular SID, that the overall tax obligation for each homeowner within these SIDs, yes, the overall tax obligation will go down.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yep.
Any additional questions, comments? Thank you, Troy. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Okay, come on down. Give your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Daniel D. Walsh. I'm an attorney. I, my address is one-one-three-three-zero Q Street, Suite two-thirty-one, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here representing SID four-ninety-five, Manchester Ridge, which is one of the eight items that's in for, in consideration of the city's two thousand and twenty annexation package. The SID is requesting that the City of Omaha to remove SID four-ninety-five from the two thousand and twenty annexation package and to request that the city delay annexation of four-ninety-five for a couple of years. The delay would give SID four-ninety-five time to really address two, what I consider to be very serious erosion problems, one of which I think could impact public safety, at least some of the residents on the north side of SID four-ninety-five. This map, let me get this. So just to orient you, this is Corby Street. This is the boundary of SID four-ninety-five. This is the City of Omaha property. North is generated here. Last, last year, the chairman of the SID four-ninety-five was contacted by the homeowner at one-seventy-five fifty-four Corby. She was concerned about the erosion problem. We had our engineers look at it. The, he concluded that the City of Omaha owns that property, that it was outside the...
Dan?
Yes.
Will you adjust that down, the map, just a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we can see, go the other way.
Down, I'm sorry.
There you go.
There you go.
Now we can see the property you're, with the erosion.
So, um, thank you. So what, we concluded that really it wasn't SID four-ninety-five's responsibility to repair this erosion problem. And I was asked to follow up with the Omaha Public Works Department to find out what, if anything, they were going to do with regard to that problem. What I've really come to find out is that the city really doesn't have enough money to fund its erosion repair obligations, in my opinion. I think it only has about ten percent of the funds necessary. So, you know, if the total amount of the erosion problems are twenty to thirty million, the city only has two to three million dollars per year to address those problems. So it's woefully underfunded, unfortunately. But then we met, but I do want to give a thanks and appreciation to the Public Works Department. They did meet us out there within the last couple of weeks, onsite at that address with that homeowner and with the SID engineer. And what we discovered was that, I think you can see, is that this erosion problem has gotten significantly worse in the last couple of years. It has increased, it's come closer to within, like, five feet of the retaining wall in the back of this homeowner's lot. The city has been monitoring this erosion problem since two thousand and seventeen, so it was aware of the problem. And what we're proposing to do is, if the city were willing to delay the annexation for a couple of years, that would allow our engineers to prepare a bank stabilization plan that would have to be approved by the Army Corps of Engineers and also by the City of Omaha. The district would seek to get some additional funding from the NRD. It's my understanding that the NRD would provide about thirty thousand dollars toward that project. And this is the erosion problem that is of the greatest concern for the district because it involves one of our residents. I've represented this district for a long time, since I formed it. So I've been representing it for about seventeen years. This board is a very active board and is very concerned about protecting its residents. And so we went from saying that this is really the City of Omaha's problem to perhaps reconsidering whether SID four-ninety-five would be willing to step up and take the lead on this. I'm not the decider, but we're going to have another SID meeting. And we've been having conversations with people of the city's staff, which I appreciate. And so we're looking for, mostly just to raise your awareness of this problem and what we, the reason why we're requesting a delay. So this is, this particular erosion problem is complicated because it is hard to access and it is a very steep erosion problem. So we're basically proposing to do about this much of it. I don't, or from basically wherever the outfall comes out there to about the other side of this homeowner's property line as extended. And that would cost at a starting point of thirty thousand dollars and probably be more likely to be, excuse me, starts at three hundred thousand dollars and is probably more likely to be between three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars just for that repair. All right, that small one. So we're looking at that, and we will have a meeting before the next public... before the next public hearing before the City Council, and would like, ideally, I'd love you to recommend the annexation package with the exclusion of SID 495, but I'm not sure that you're willing to do that. But the other erosion problem that we just became aware of about a month ago, the SID engineer got a call from Public Works and said, you have a, there's an erosion problem and SID 495 is responsible for it. We disagree. The engineer disagreed. The SID, I mean, here are the boundaries of SID 495. Here's the erosion problem. SID 555 is right there, Andreessen Meadows. And so, it's south of Blondo Street. SID did construct that as part of the requirement of the subdivision agreement, when it was the very first phase subdivision agreement. But once it completed construction, we think it's really the City of Omaha's problem. But again, we may consider to, to help work on this. Again, we would have our engineers prepare a plans for a bank stabilization project and would maybe seek funds from the NRD, and that would be another $30,000. This erosion problem is not as bad because the access is easier to this, and the erosion is not that, that deep. And so, this would be, the engineer thought, up to $300,000 to repair it. I don't know for sure, but you know, before the, I'm not really the decider. The board has to, SID 495 would have to approve these. But I guess we're, we wanted to bring these issues up to this board and to the City Council and to the city to make sure that the numbers that are being presented to the city as the cost of the annexation include these numbers. All right? Because these are significant obligations, and as soon as the City of Omaha annexes 495, they really become the City of Omaha's problem. So, an obligation to repair. So, with me today is Rich Kotan, and I think he wanted to say a few words and has had discussions with the homeowner at, on Corby Street.
Mr. Walsh, before, before we do that, may I ask you just a question, a quick question? So, was SID 495 at all considering a solution to the erosion problems prior to the notification of the annexation?
No, because I wasn't aware that the City of Omaha had those kinds of, didn't have the funds to fix it. Now that we're aware that the City of Omaha doesn't have any funds and may not fix it for 10 years, we feel like it may be of benefit to our, one of our residents. And this board being, I think, they have a real community there. They had, they have 4th of July parties. They, you know, they look out for one another is the bottom line. And so, once I've figured out that this was, the city might not be able to repair this within the next 10 years, and that the erosion problem has gotten so much worse in the last two years, you know, kids go down in that creek and they play, and you know, it's, I'd hate to see anything happen to a kid or an adult, because some of those trees in that, I mean, some of that erosion is actually at a negative slope on the opposite side. And there's 50-foot trees that are in that channel that look like they could fall down. So I, I think it's a significant issue.
So was it the annexation notice that prompted the neighbors to start looking into the cost of this, then?
Yeah. Yes, they did. I mean...
But nothing before that?
Nothing before that, no.
Okay. That's, that's all I need. Thank you.
Right.
Any other pro-opponents that wish to speak? Come on down.
There's those maps, if you need them.
My name is Rich Kotan, and I live at 2522 North 176th Street in Manchester Ridge. I'm the current Chair of the Board of the Trustees of Sanitary Improvement District, and we are, we are concerned about this. We've, I've been contacted by several of the homeowners in this area. Again, partially, since we've been notified that we're going to be annexed, it certainly became more of an issue. That's true. But we were looking at these, first of all, the one on the north is city property, and we had a, we had really no knowledge that we had any responsibility there. But with the rains that we've had this spring, there's been a lot more erosion in that area, and consequently, the homeowners in that area have been contacting us more often. We, especially when they got their notice, and we started looking at it a little bit more, hoping that we could find a solution that would, would be acceptable to everyone at a reasonable cost. But we brought our engineer in, and his estimates were much higher than we had anticipated. So, and the one to the south, we just found out about two weeks ago, I believe, or three. But we, you know, the SID board is responsible to the homeowners there. We feel a responsibility to them, and we believe that we can fix this problem, at least in the short term, to give these homeowners some relief from this erosion problem much, much faster than the city can, certainly no better, but faster. And we hope that you'll take that into consideration and allow us to, to do this repair before something else happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich. Hey, Rich?
Yes, sir.
Did they say, the engineer say, how long it will take to get to that five feet closer to the retaining wall? Have they given a timetable?
Well, I have a statement from one of the homeowners that has lived at 17554 for seven years, and they noticed extreme erosion. Oops, that's not very well focused.
That's good.
There we go. This was Lindsey Peel. She lives at 17554 Corby Street. She was unable to be here today, so she sent me this. They've noticed the, excuse me, the erosion in the, in the creek over the past two years, and the creek drop-off is five feet from their property now. Apparently, they had measured this last year, and it was 10 feet away. So it moved five feet roughly in one year. So they're, they're concerned with the safety of adults and children in that area, and that the kids and some adults that work, that play down in that area, as well as their retaining wall.
Did the, did the engineer say anything, though? Did the engineer have an estimate of time before this would be past the property line?
No.
Okay.
No, they did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Yes, sir.
Was there anybody else?
Thank you.
Rich, any idea how long it would take for, if you guys were to fix this, what that timeline would look like? And do you guys have the funds to fix it right away?
I don't know about funds. A lawyer probably has a better idea about that.
Yes, I, so, what, what the engineer informed me was that there was...
Dan, say your name again.
I'm sorry. Dan Walsh, attorney for the SID. Bob Zawinski indicated to me that, you know, part of the delay, I mean, we'd start right away if we could, but you have to get permission from the Corps of Engineers. So that's, causes a delay. I don't know how quickly they can review it and approve the plans. It's a, I think, the south erosion problem is like a three-week project, and the north problem would be, he told me, would be a two-month project that would, we could start, I think we'd start both of them next year, and the north one could be completed in two months if there's good weather. I did check with our fiscal agent, and they indicated that we could issue warrants for it, and, and then go to bonds, and the bonds could be wrapped around the current bonds, and that the district could pay for it, and that it wouldn't increase the levy. And so, we think that we can do it. We're in a position to do it. I would hope that the city, under these circumstances, would allow us to do it, but I'm not the decider on that. And so, but we're looking forward to talking with the city. We've been talking to the city. We want to continue talking to the city about this. And so, we're hopeful that we can proceed. Okay? Were there any other questions?
Yeah, Dan, do you already have the plans completed for both these projects?
No, the plans have not been completed. So, but I, Mr. Zawinski is with E&amp;A Consulting Group. E&amp;A has done a lot of these projects. I, I think they could do the plans, but I don't know how long it would take for them to do the plans or get them submitted to the Army Corps of Engineer and to the City of Omaha.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Are there any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Troy, did you want an opportunity to come up and address these issues?
Yes, Mayor, Chairman, thank you again. Troy Anderson, Mayor's Office. We have had conversations since this was brought to our attention with members of our legal team, as well as members of our finance team, members of our public works team. And so, I wanted me, make sure that we differentiate here a little bit between, we do recognize, and I'll, I'll kind of put that back up there for illustrative purposes, we do recognize that this creek and the degradation of the creek is something that we are aware of, have been aware of for some time. We've been continuing to monitor the situation. We do recognize the severity of the degradation, and do recognize that this is obviously a priority project for the city that needs to be remedied at the next couple of years. So, we wanted to sort of differentiate, one, that we do reckon, that this needs to be done in the near future. And so, we're going to continue to work with Public Works through our capital improvement plan and through our budgeting process to try to identify those funds that can help make sure that this project gets completed in a timely manner. With that being said, we, again, we kind of separated the conversation out between the need for the project and somewhat who's going to pay for it. So it's come to our attention that, yes, if we, if we don't annex the city, if we don't annex the SID this year, and the SID goes out, issues the warrants, sells them, that these are arguably 12- to 18-year bonds. In other words, it would take them roughly 12 to 18 years to pay off the $300,000 to $500,000 necessary to complete the work. During that time period, if the city were ever to reconsider and annex the property, during annexation, not only do we assume all of the SID's assets, but we also assume all of the SID's debts. In other words, we'd end up paying for it anyway. So with that being said, our, our cost-benefit analysis recommends that we move forward with the annexation and continue to work with our Public Works Department on prioritizing this project in the near future. Thank you.
I had closed the public hearing. Are there any additional comments or questions from the board?
I'm going to make a comment. And I voted no for last year's annexation package, and I'm going to vote no on this year's annexation package. It's a two-part thing. One, it's a little personal, and the other one, it's a, it's a matter of fairness. We have a policy, when it comes to taking on more lane miles, more streets in our city, we have a policy of the substandard street policy. I talked about this last year. I really disagree with the substandard street policy. And because of that, I'm not going to vote for this annexation. The substandard street policy is a policy that the, was enacted by the City Council maybe two years ago, somewhere in there. I think Brinker Harding and Vinnie Palermo were the only two no votes on it. But it's a policy where if you live in a subdivision and the city decides that your streets are substandard, that they won't come in and repair them once they get to a certain level on the Pazer scale. You get three options. I won't go into all, all the options, but a lot of it becomes an assessment on the homeowner. And for me, that's, it, it's, it's not fair. And we got to, there's a lot of other areas in the city, a lot of other subdivisions, that they could be deemed substandard streets. I don't think ours in our area are substandard streets, and we got document, documentation to prove that. But a lot of other areas where there are streets that could be called substandard. I've been on the planning board for about 13 years, and we've always stressed, the people that come in here with SIDs or, or we're gonna, we have substreets and we're, stubstreets, and we're going to extend those over into a neighborhood. And we've always argued that those streets belong to the City of Omaha. It's the City of Omaha's responsibility to take care of them. And in this instance, and that seems to be the fair way of doing it, in this instance, with the substandard street policy, I don't see the fairness about it. In that City Council meeting, Ben Gray, this is absolutely no criticism of Ben Gray, I applaud him for speaking up for his constituents in his district, made the point that we have a lot of people, Ben said, in my district that can't afford even another penny increase in their assessment. And so, part of the unfairness is, is that people that can't afford those streets, the city will pay for. If you're living in a, in a subdivision that we, the city deems you can afford to pay for it, well, you're going to have to pay for it. Again, a lack of fairness. I could go on. I just wanted to say that was my reason. Troy knows about it. Last year, I made the same comment when Troy brought that up. But I wish that this substandard policy would get changed, and that it would be a fairness for everybody in the entire city. I know people in my, my neighborhood, the majority of them voted for the $200 million street bond issue that we're not going to, we're not going to see, but it's not going to be used in our neighborhood. But we want to have good streets throughout the, throughout the city. People in other subdivisions that voted for the street bond issue, as you could tell by the majority, it overwhelmingly passed. And some of those people aren't going to see the benefits of that also. So just from a fairness standpoint, that's where I'm coming from, and I apologize, Troy, but I will not be voting for this annexation. That's the only comment I had. Does anybody have any other comments or questions before we move on? Eric, did you want to say anything?
Just briefly, you know, just on today's agenda, we have a lot of developments, a lot of new Platts, a lot of new projects, new SIDs. We see them frequently. Troy had mentioned there was over, I think over 120 of them existing in our, within our jurisdiction or Douglas County. And, and part of the development of SIDs is to manage the orderly growth of the city, and when those neighborhoods have reached that financial, you know, balancing point, to bring them into the City of Omaha, which is always the intention. So, I just wanted to reiterate that, and staff recommends approval of the annexation proposal in full as proposed in your report.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number 10, and we will take item number 21 along with it. And I believe Chris Carnes is going to recuse herself. So, let the record show that she has left the, the meeting. Agenda item number 10 is case C-12-20-85, applicant Jim Hughes, Meridian Development LLC, request preliminary and final plat approval of Meridian addition and minor plat inside city limits. Location, southwest of 72nd Street and West Center Road. And I'll read number 21 along with it. Agenda item number 21 is case C-11-20-105, C-7-20-106, applicant Jim Hughes, Meridian Development LLC, request approval of a PUR plan unit redevelopment overlay district along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple-family residential in the GO district. Property is located within an ACI overlay district. Location, southwest of 72nd Street and West Center Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Members, John Blumenthal, 1700 Farnham Street, Omaha. Thank you for your time today. I'm here on behalf of applicant Meridian Development. The proposed project, you've seen before, we were here a few weeks ago on the tax increment financing. This is a 270-unit, approximately 270-unit Class A apartment complex at 72nd and Center, as we've come to call the Shark Club site. The Shark Club is a dilapidated former bar and hotel right at the heart of Omaha, at 72nd and Center. This site stands dilapidated, rundown, and my client is prepared to, excuse me, proceed this fall on this development. This will be a good project for the city, we believe. We did meet with the neighbors very early on, back when you could still have meetings with neighbors in person. That was refreshing. We believe we had addressed the neighbors' concerns on connectivity. I don't know, we had a few concerns frankly about apartments in general. I would tell you in response to that, we believe this project is what's best for the city as a whole and not just for this specific intersection, although we do believe this is going to be a great project that brings life back to that intersection where it really is an eyesore and dangerous right now. We also believe we've addressed the neighbors' connectivity concerns in the plan we submitted. We have our engineer here today as well to answer any of your hard questions on the, on the site design itself. But we happy to answer any questions you have and appreciate your consideration.
John, when you said you had meetings with the neighborhood, I saw a woman out in the audience here shaking her head no. Could you, what, what meetings did you have? Did you, did you want to tell us about how many, how many people attended?
We had one meeting.
One meeting?
Initially, before the, the project got submissions underway for, it was at the time that we were under consideration for, for creating a TIF district here, a community redevelopment area here. Director Fanslaw was there, so hopefully he can attest that we did have a, a meeting. I would say it was well-attended. I want to say about 40 neighbors, 30 to 40 neighbors. Does that sound, 30 neighbors or so were there? I'm not sure. I've got to count, but we had a meeting. We thought we had a good rapport. We've been open and clear with the city, with the neighbors at all times. And whomever is here today in opposition, if there are folks, we believe we've been transparent and willing to take thoughts on the project. Frankly, we've received not a lot or if any negative feedback since the time of that meeting.
Okay, thank you, John. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak?
We're all opponents.
Okay. How many of you wish to speak? Okay, that's, that's fine. Please give us new information. Try not to repeat what a speaker's already presented to us, if you would. And give your name and address, please.
My name is Mary Powell, and my husband and I own the property at 3005 South 72nd Avenue. I would like to show for you on the screen, this is what we received in the mail as our first notice of this project dated May 19th of this year. We can't read what's on the document it was sent to us. It's very blurry. You can't tell what's being built. Just very concerned that way. So, I would like to start off by thanking you for allowing me to speak regarding this project and to bring to your attention some of the grave concerns for public safety and the welfare of our neighborhood if this project is allowed to proceed as proposed. First, we understand that the purpose of the meeting is to decide on the approval of a conditional use permit to allow multifamily residents in the GO district. The letter we received dated May 19th, 2020, also states that the purpose is to subdivide 4.21 acres into one lot. How do you subdivide something into one lot? What is being divided and how is it being divided? We have concerns about the property being rezoned for multifamily residential use as proposed and noted in the comments, concerns, questions that have been raised about this project. Why not mention the commercial zoning, maintain the commercial zoning so a business could be implemented that would not impact the neighborhood 24/7? Our concerns relate not only to the proposed project, but more importantly, to the negative impact this project will have on public safety and the safety within our own neighborhood. Before beginning, I raised questions why homeowners in the neighborhood did not receive any written notice prior to this project or plans for the property until the letters were sent out May 19th, just 15 days ago. Can anyone provide me with information on why the homeowners were not notified sooner of a project with such magnitude and potential detriment to public safety, resale values, and our neighborhood? We should not have to bear the burden of economic impact on our neighborhood because someone wants to make money by packing a lot of renters, potentially over 1,000, into a small area surrounding an established neighborhood. Why is it always the established neighborhood that have to pay the price for the corporate world that only care about making money at the expense of public safety? We are an older, well-established neighborhood. The neighborhood is home to Westgate Elementary School and playgrounds, St. Joan of Arc School and playground, many young families with young children, the elderly, retirees, and taxpayer members of the working class. We ask that the planning board not be swayed by corporate greed and request that they place the public safety and the neighborhood at the forefront of any decision that you make. Since we have never received any prior notice, we have had to rely on information that has been brought to our attention since we received the letter. It appears the plans include opening Oak Street into the property. We do not want our property value to decrease due to increased traffic caused by an entrance off of Oak Street. So, if I try to get on the screen here, what they are looking at, this is 72nd Avenue. This is Oak Street. They are proposing to pull an entrance into the property here, right along the neighbor line. We were told that an entrance off of Oak Street was needed because the fire department would rather drive through the narrow streets of a crowded residential neighborhood where children are playing and cars are parked on the street to respond to a fire on proposed property than to drive through a main thoroughfare, 72nd Street. You'll notice there is currently an entrance here off of 72nd with its own separate lane to enter the property, and they are proposing to close that. Really? We request to see written documentation from the fire chief that accessing a fire through a residential neighborhood is preferred to a main thoroughfare as a means to access property that's on fire. If you lived on the fourth floor of the property and the building was on fire, would you really want to wait for that fire truck to come down a residential neighborhood? Or would you want them to get to you as quickly as they could? What about calls for ambulances to the property? With each ambulance, 911 call, the fire department also responds with lights and sirens 24/7. Do emergency vehicles really want to risk public safety by driving through a neighborhood with children playing, elderly walking, and vehicles parked along the street? We were told that the entrance to the property off of Oak would have a gate so that only the fire department could open it. We all know that the expense of an access is put in. It would just be a matter of time before the property owners would want to request that the entrance be open to the public because the property, the way it was designed was not working. Sure, you may say that would never happen. The builders of the Titanic also said it was unsinkable, but we all know how that turned out. So, they're looking at wanting to open an entrance here for the fire department to come in. And what are the fire trucks going to do? Stop down here at the bottom of the property when the building is way up here? Or how do they propose to get those fire trucks through that property? We were told that the city wants to close off the entrance from 72nd Street, apparently due to traffic flow. If this traffic flow is too great for a six-lane thoroughfare, then it is most definitely too much for a residential neighborhood. There is already an entrance to the property that worked well when the hotel and the Shark Club were there. Why does this entrance up on 72nd Street then, why did the city merge three lanes of traffic? So, right now, if you're going southbound on 72nd Street and you get up to Grover Street, they've all of a sudden merged three lanes of traffic down to two till you get underneath the interstate and then you have to merge back over if you want to get on the other route. So, the city has already closed a section of 72nd Street by Grover between that and the interstate because they thought that would help with traffic flow. There is already an inlet to the property off of 72nd Street that has its own drive to get there. It makes no sense to close that entrance and to bring fire trucks, ambulance, rescue squads through a busy neighborhood to access the property. Why not put a traffic light at the entrance of the property off of 72nd Street? 72nd Street, as we all know, was widened to accommodate the increased traffic with a new entrance put into the property at the time that that expansion was done. I'm sure the city planners considered the best access to the property when they redesigned 72nd Street and included the new entrance. There are two perfect entrances to the property. One here off of Center Street and one down here off of 72nd Street. It doesn't say, make sense to close off an entrance that works only to put in an entrance off of Oak Street that will negatively impact public safety and the safety of our neighborhood. The streets in our neighborhood are not in the greatest shape already. If you drive through with trucks, fire trucks, ambulances, increased everything else, whether it's dump trucks or whatever to the neighborhood, that is only going to deteriorate the streets. We are paying increased taxes to supposedly repair some of the streets. We doubt that our streets will be on the top of that list. With the increased traffic, the road conditions would deteriorate significantly and rapidly. We were told that the property will have a parking garage. It is our understanding that use of the parking garage will come with an added fee. What would prevent renters and visitors who do not want to pay a parking fee to park in the garage from parking on the streets in our neighborhood? This would cause yet another concern for safety. The plan appears to show a four-story structure. This has been, there has been mention of a rooftop pool and fitness area. Does this mean the structure is essentially five stories of usable space? Does the parking garage that they plan to put underground, is it only partway underground and the sticks out of the ground and then the other four stories go up yet on top of that? When the apartment complex that was approved and built on the east side of 72nd Street, east of our property, we were led to believe that the structure would be built down the hill to the east and the structure would be visible at the top of the hill no more than two stories tall, the same as the height of the neighboring building to the south. This was not the case. And it's a perfect example of the neighborhood being misled, promised things that were not true. The apartment complex ended up being built right next to 72nd Street and over four stories tall. And as evidenced by advertising of the property, it's now touting it has a fifth floor so people can use their fitness center and have a beautiful view of the city. Yes, it overlooks the city, but it also overlooks right into our very backyard. What happened to our right of privacy and to public safety? Renters can now not only see in our backyards, but into our windows of our home and our bedroom. If the blinds are open, it's very easy for someone to scout out a neighborhood from that height. We are again being faced with the possibility of yet another four-story structure that again allows our privacy and safety to be negatively impacted. There was information that the proposed renters would be doctors and medical professionals. How do we know this to be true? By doctors and medical professionals, do you really mean students? So, it could be more like a college dorm with all partying and noise that comes with it. There was mention of a courtyard pool and a rooftop pool. How do you plan to prevent yelling and partying that comes with having a swimming pool from surrounding our neighborhood? Envision the pool parties we recently saw at the Lake of the Ozarks on Memorial Day. In addition to the above comments, we have requests for information and concerns related to the property that need to be addressed. Where will the trash contact, containers be placed on the property? At the entrance off of Center Street? Are they going to be placed along the road? Or do they plan to place them next to our property so that we have to smell the stench of rotting garbage? We have to listen to the clanging of the garbage trucks as they pick up the dumpsters and they bang them against the truck to get the garbage to fall out, happening between anywhere from 2:00 AM to 4:00 AM in the morning? The noise is even louder if you want to sleep with your window open on a cool spring or summer night. In our case, with the four-story building right across the street looking down into our bedroom, we no longer feel safe in leaving our curtains and windows open. We do not want to have to put up with the smell of garbage for 1,000 people. When we open our windows or patio door, we want to breathe fresh air just like the rest of you do. We don't want to breathe in the stench of rotting garbage. We do not want a street or driveway of any kind next to our property. We already have to bear the burden of traffic noise from Center Street and the reflected noise off the newly-built four-story apartment across 72nd Street. Why should we have to deal with additional traffic noise on yet another side of our property? How will the water runoff and snowmelt be dealt with in the property? As it is now, the majority of that drains to the southeast entrance on 72nd Street and down the storm drain. If they close off that entrance, that causes more problems. With any significant rainfall, snowfall, or snowmelt, the water drains around the west side of the concrete privacy wall that was put up as a noise barrier when they expanded 72nd Street, right into our very backyard, causing washouts, grass to not grow, standing water that attracts mosquitoes, and leave nothing but mud in our backyard. We have had to put chunks of concrete next to our fence to try to prevent the soil erosion and the ruts coming from the runoff of that property. During construction, all of the disturbed soil and trash from the 4.21 acres will wash down the hill to the south and into our yard unless a wall is built in advance. What type of trees will be planted on the property to protect the neighbors from the visual sight and noise pollution? Would there be at least two rows of well-established evergreen trees surrounding the entire property on the west and south sides to prevent, provide year-round privacy? For example, 20-foot evergreens with a trunk diameter of at least one foot? Would the 12-foot concrete privacy wall come all the way up to provide additional privacy before construction begins and all the pounding starts? The concrete privacy wall would help contain noise. With such a large building proposed, similar to the apartment building on the east side of 72nd Street that we just endured, we will be enduring the construction sounds for the next two years, the demolition, the grading, the pounding, pile, piling driving equipment, pounding the steel beams into the footings. And I want to let you know, they don't start at 8:00 in the morning. They start bright and early. So, if you work nights or you work late, you're woken up in the middle of your sleep time. The constant grinding away at your psyche and the noise that you have, you can't talk in your backyard because of now the noise from 72nd Street, even with the wall reflecting off the four-story building. How much more noise pollution does our neighborhood have to endure? How do you plan to prevent foot traffic from the property from entering our neighborhood? Will there be a fence around the property that is tall enough that someone can't jump or climb over it? or climb over it? We do not want 1,000-plus individuals entering our neighborhood. Our neighborhood with its Westgate Elementary School and Playground and St. Joan of Arc School and Playground is quiet and peaceful, and we want to keep it that way. Where will the maintenance shed and the maintenance equipment be stored? What is the maximum capacity of the complex? Not just the total number of apartments, but the maximum number of people that they plan to cram into that small space? What is the proposed monthly apartment rent? Where will the administrative offices be located? What is the actual height of the structure going to be above ground? And keep in mind, it's already setting up on a partial hill, so when you add four stories, you're overlooking more people's backyards. Why is a driveway being installed along the west side of the property? What is this driveway for? Where does it connect? Why not put the driveway along 72nd Street where you already have the noise and not back into the neighbors' houses? There is ample entry on Center Street and at the 72nd Street exit. Let your parking be along this side of the street where the traffic noise is, not bringing it into the neighborhood. Is it really just putting plans in place for a drive-through that is accessed off of Oak Street? As you see, this little driveway that they have here that they want to put in, what's the purpose? We believe the purpose is to eventually extend that into the property so that anybody can come off of Center Street, cut through the property, cut through our neighborhood, possibly go through whichever way they want, and just create a great public safety issue. Is there a plan now or possibly in the future to open Oak Street all the way through to 72nd Street, yet creating more traffic? I was talking to someone the other day within the county buildings down here who said, "Well, gee, I live over on Pacific Street. I love cutting through your neighborhood to get to Burger King." Well, how many other people do we have to endure cutting through our neighborhood coming from an apartment complex with over 1,000 people living there?
Mary?
Yes, I'm almost finished.
Okay.
I have just a little bit. Why are the current entrances off the property not enough unless the size of the apartment building is too big and the occupants are too great for the location? How is the parking garage accessed? How many parking stalls are in the garage? And where is public parking gonna be for visitors to the complex or to tenants that don't want to pay for that? Where will the parking? Are there plans now to add a bar or restaurant to the property, and what type of future modifications? Due to the coronavirus and the short timeframe, it's been hard to pull things together, but I did go ahead and contact neighbors in the neighborhood. I have packages for all of you. I have signed petitions against the property by over 75 people. And I would like to comment on just one statement that the developer made that I think really hits home. He said, "We want life back to the intersection." So, we want life back into the streets of Center Street and 72nd. Well, we want life in our neighborhood, and we don't want that taken away. Thank you for your time. May I approach?
Can you bring those forward? And Eric, do you want them or to Lisa?
There is one original, and there are five copies. It is...
It includes copies of all of the signed petitions. It includes a document of everything that I read today, and it includes a letter that I have previously sent to the planning board just within the past week with the concerns regarding this project. Thank you for your time. I'll turn it over to my neighbors.
Thank you, Mary. Before I ask if there's any other opponents, Mary went for quite a while and addressed almost every issue there is to address. If you've got new information that you want to bring forward, you're welcome to, but Mary addressed a lot of information. So, if you've got something new, come forward, give your name and address.
Patrick McCaslin, 2811 South 74th Street. I don't have a whole lot to say. I think Mary had a lot of questions that could have been answered if we did have a neighborhood meeting. So, I have really three questions for our developers. Number one, when was this meeting? Number two, where was this meeting? And number three, how did you decide who you were gonna invite? Because I don't think any of us here got that invitation. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponent that wishes to speak, give new information, come on down.
My name is Virginia Bognich, 2803 South 74th Street. This will be my backyard. We've been in the house for 49 years. We found out many years ago, they had two houses down from us, there was a couple named Olson, that when the motel was built there originally, it was with the law in place that the access onto 72nd Avenue not take place. This was in the paperwork for the motel that this would not happen. When they built the doctor's office behind us, the lawyer for Olsons went and made sure that that, again, was not opened up to 72nd Avenue. Whether that, I don't have access to the lawyer. The Olsons have now long since deceased. But my concern is that this was, sorry, this was the law years ago when the hotel was originally built. I don't see, you know, that's something that should be considered now, that there's a reason why it wasn't allowed then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Virginia. Any other opponents that wish to speak? That's all right.
My name is David Murphy, 7304 Oak Street. I'm here with Joni Maloney. Together, we live there. We're literally right behind the office building, which is just west of the proposed development. My only thing I want to add is, from a purely aesthetic basis, everything that Mary said completely on point. But just the sacrifice, I mean, there's a two-story office building. For the most part, yeah, it probably doesn't really coordinate with the neighborhood, but it's fairly harmless. People are out of there by 6:00. There's still too much dumpster noise. But a four-story complex, it just seems to not, somewhere, Garrick, my neighbor, showed me old city clause about new developments jibing with the characteristics of a neighborhood. This doesn't even come close. Furthermore, the thing that we got in the mail, the two-page item, looked more like a pamphlet for the developer. It just, with a full-color picture of the monstrosity. It's, to me, it's too monolithic, it's too many units, and the ingress and egress issue is really a big deal, and that's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, David. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. John, did you want to come forward and, yep, come on forward, give your name again, and you can respond to all the items that have been listed.
Keep us moving. I'm not gonna respond to all of them. John Blumenthal, 1700 Farnham Street. I'm respectful of the opponents here. It's frankly many of the same arguments we hear on every apartment project in the city, and it's unfortunate that we still always debate some of these items because the fact of the matter is, we need apartment living in the city. We have young families with young children who will be moving into these apartments as well. I heard the same arguments in my neighborhood out at Armbruce Acres when they built Breckenridge, which is a much bigger complex, when they built the legacy apartments. Many of these concerns, if not all these concerns, don't come to fruition, and so I'm not gonna address these one by one, but I will address some important points. First of all, we did provide notice. The meeting was December 2019, occurred at the College of St. Mary, which is the closest public space we could find. We sent notices to a two-mile radius, which was performed pursuant to a title search. So, that happened, again, before December of 2020. I'd also like to point out that Larry Mizata from Meridian Development has had extensive conversations with Terry Anderson, who's the president of the Homeowners Association for the surrounding neighborhood. So, we've tried to work with the HOA as much as we can, and we've believed had a good rapport up until this point. Regarding certain questions can be found in the PUR application, so I won't go point by point. Many of those questions are in the PUR application, but I do want to just say, we've tried to be transparent at all times, but the access issue, frankly, the city is requiring the emergency access. We've also had some issues, I don't say issues, but some, a lot of discussion about the best way to accomplish that with the planning department is probably the best way to put that, and we feel like we've accomplished what is best for the neighborhood, appropriate for the development, and also meets the requests of the city. And so, we're trying to be responsive to the city who needs those emergency access, and the fact of the matter is, we have to have that, the city has to have that emergency access. Some of the other access points have been discussed with the city, but we believe, again, we've worked in conjunction with the planning department to try and receive, put together a proposal that's going to be the best proposal we can have here. There's no perfect access that's gonna make the city happy, the developer happy, and the neighbors happy, but we've tried to be transparent and work connectively with the city at all times. So, I think that's, one other point of clarification, there is no rooftop pool, so no concern there, but we believe we're gonna have, again, a good project. We're gonna invest $49 million into the city, create jobs for the city. This is best for the overall part of the city in light of, again, what we believe is a dilapidated portion of town right now at 72nd and Center. Thank you.
Hold on, John.
Sure.
Are there any questions or comments for John?
Yeah.
Apartment complex? 277 on the units. Those are units? Correct. Okay. There's a fair amount of single units in there, but I'm not sure I have a breakdown right now out of total occupancy. It's consistent with every project we've seen within a two-mile radius.
Any other questions?
Did you address the screening between the residential and your property?
The screen?
The screening. Is there any screening between? On the plan, there's a line there.
Yeah, I would say there's no screening there. I don't think, frankly, it's necessary. There'll be landscaping that meets the plan of the city, but it's, the street separates the neighborhood, so I don't think it's, I mean, it's not right abutting to the, there's a street separating it. Dan, there's nothing else there that I'm missing?
Trees on the south, or south, I guess, the residential.
What type of trees are you putting in and the size of the trees?
I'm not sure we've completed the landscaping plan yet, but we're happy to work, you know, with the city appropriately, and, yeah, of course.
All right.
Can we also group on the city on the...
Egress and egress. Eric will have the opportunity to address some of the questions. All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
So, we close the public hearing unless a board member asks you to come up. If anyone wants to. You have to give your name and address, sir.
Not a problem. I'm Gemma Schment. I live at 3021 South 72nd Avenue. She had covered most of the points I wanted to say, but what got me more angered about the whole development was when he said, "Yeah, there's, a lot of those issues are with every apartment." Yeah, I lived in an apartment as a young couple, but I now have that one that's to the east that where nobody listened to us. Now, looking into my backyard where I have no privacy at all, and I have two complete stories looking in, and I'm afraid to even open up my windows on that side. So, I feel for my neighbors that are closer to this apartment because now my rights are violated because the apartment that was to the east was approved, and nobody listened. And when you have that tall, you can't avoid that without something.
Okay, thank you. No further questions or comments, I'll get Eric's recommendations, and did you want to address some of the points, Eric?
Yeah, I'll try to answer some of those questions. 277 units, 114 efficiency, 93 one-bedroom and 72-bedroom is the count that we have in our review. 375 parking stalls completely enclosed within a parking structure. The parking structure is accessed only from West Center Road along the west side of the property as it enters in mid-site into the garage. That garage does not have any access to the neighborhood to the south. I know that because originally, the city pushed very strong to have a vehicular connection from the site to the street to the south, so ultimately, that did not play out in that fashion. The fire access on the south of the site is strictly for fire access and emergency purposes. There's no parking stalls on that Southern Drive. There would be no ability for vehicles, you know, I believe it's gated. I don't think they would have any access to park there or anything. The site would have pedestrian and bike access to the neighborhood because we believe the project should be a part of the neighborhood. You know, you stated that you want it separated and not included in our neighborhood. We believe these people are residents and should be part of the neighborhood. You know, they should use the schools, park space, the churches. We want them to be included and, you know, be able to access, they're a nice neighborhood, frankly.
Please, no comments. We had our public hearing, and now Eric speaking. If you'd please remain seated and silent. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. So, the parking garage is entirely enclosed within the structure. It is an existing ACI overlay district on this site, which means the project will have to meet the highest design levels that the City of Omaha has in place in our zoning code, which the proposal does. They are not seeking a parking or height waiver. The existing zoning allows up to 120 feet in height if this was an office structure. I'm just putting that as context. There are a few waivers that are requested as part of the PUR, mostly with a slight increase in pervious coverage, floor area ratio, and there are a few small landscaping Specifically to some of the questions that Mary brought up, our notice that you received from the City of Omaha, the City of Omaha is required to send notices to property owners within 300 feet for certain projects, which includes the PUR or the conditional use permit that this site is. We say subdivision, it means plating. It doesn't mean it's breaking up into multiple lots. It's just creating one lot in this scenario, so that word can be a little bit misleading. Just going through, I mentioned the number of units, the fire access on the south, I mean, touched on that. I don't know if I have too much more to add unless the board has any specific questions from me, but I'll read the first recommendation report, which is item number 10 on the agenda. You'll have that vote, and then we can come back for the other item, number 21. So, regarding Agenda Item 10, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat subject to the five conditions listed in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat subject to those conditions, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
I will move approval of the preliminary plat subject to the five conditions outlined in the recommendations report, and then approval of the final plat subject to conditions, a preliminary plat approval, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to hearing by city council.
I have a motion and second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Regarding Agenda Item 21, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential in the GEO district subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the PUR overlay district subject to submittal of acceptable plans prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
Subject to the six conditions in the staff report, approval of PUR district subject to submittal of acceptable PUR plans prior to forwarding to the city council.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Will someone let Chris know, let the record show that Chris Carnes has re-entered the meeting? Eric, we're on eleven, aren't we? That was taken off of, okay. Agenda item number eleven, KC-ten dash twenty dash eighty-six, C- twelve dash twenty dash eighty-seven. Applicant Charleston Homes LLC, request preliminary plat approval of Arbor View lots three eighty-two through six forty-one, outlots I through N, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R four. Location southeast of two hundred and sixteenth and Fort Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Eric's not going to say anything at this, okay. Kyle Voll, E&amp;A Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Kyle Voll, E&amp;A Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road. I'm the engineer for the project. Today also with me is Mark Sedola of Charleston Homes, the developer. This was on the consent agenda, we've removed this from the consent agenda. We're fine with all of the points in the recommendation report. There are two items that I'd like to point out that we'd like to further work with staff on. The first of those is item two, which is include the remaining portion of Lot One, Bruning's First Edition in-and-out lot, and then the second item there is remove all improvements within the floodway currently located on Lot One Bruning's First Edition. I'll try to be brief, because I know it's a long agenda still, so, but the projection here. The overall location for the site, this is a single-family residential development located southeast of two hundred and sixteenth, which is here, and Fort Street. There's a future NRD proposed lake here in this location. At this time, the purchase of the parcel is what I've hatched, so it's approximately the east half of the ag condition that's remaining. It's bordered by Fort Street on the north, and on the south side, there's a Waters of the U.S. creek. We have a, with it being a Waters of the U.S., we are not going to be grading and impacting that waterway, and then there's a three-to-one-plus-twenty setback for our lots off of that waterway as well. I'd like to point out or bring to your attention, I've got to zoom in here, so, this Bruning's First Lot One is this lot that comes all the way down here to Maple Street. So, let me zoom in on that. Here's just our plat, which shows a portion of that Lot One Bruning's Edition. So, let me zoom in here, make sure you can see it all. So, this Bruning's, this is a remnant of a City of Elkhorn plat. It is an oddity. It's highly unusual to have a lot that is platted and not zoned, so it's still in ag condition. It was platted, it has Lot One Bruning's Edition. At this time, our client is purchasing just approximately twenty acres of that, so by survey, we can split that lot legally, which would, we would have a twenty-acre portion which is part of our purchase, and then there still would be a thirty-one-acre parcel remaining that would go all the way to two hundred and sixteenth Street and down to Maple. The seller, Goshland Company, does not want this portion included in the plat, because they want to continue to use this as an ag condition, so it's not zoned. If we included it in the plat, we'd have to change the zoning. I did have a conversation with Mark Johnson, who was the SID, or, I'm sorry, the attorney for Goshland, and he reiterated that before the meeting today, when I mentioned this to him on the recommendation report. So, our ask is, we still would like to move forward and work with staff on this, on those two conditions, but we'd still request an approval today and move forward. But our goal would be to just include, and this portion that is hatched, as far as the twenty-acre portion of Bruning's Lot One, and that would be part of this particular plat, leave the remaining thirty-one acres as a separate parcel. One other thing, I guess I'll point out, there was also four other remnant parcels on the east side here. We are purchasing those and cleaning those up, those will also be part of our plat. So, this may be a future phase another two or three years from now, and we could clean up at that point, but certainly not part of property that we own, control, or are purchasing at this time. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, Kyle. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Come forward. Please give your name and address.
Oh, my name is Weston Christman. I live at two one one zero two Old Coach Road. And actually, the gentleman before me answered a lot of my questions already, so, that helped out quite a bit. My concern was the land that the gentleman mentioned. It is federally protected wetlands, and it does butt right up to all the residents there on Old Coach Road. And due to the significant runoff of 2019, we did have some water in the backyards of a lot of those locations. So, my concern was if that land was changed from agricultural to residential, that that land could possibly be developed, and the foliage, the trees, a lot of the reasons it's federally protected wetland could cause erosion and additional flooding, which could be an issue with the homes along Old Coach Road. So, like I said, I believe the gentleman had covered most of that, but that was just a concern I had, would have liked to have been more prepared, but didn't get a lot of notice on this, so, I just wanted to come here to share my concern.
Okay, thank you, Weston. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Oh, sure. I thought I kind of agreed with you, so.
Well, I've got even better news for them.
We'll need your name again.
Kyle Voll, E&amp;A Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road.
I just have a question for, why did not that lot get split up?
Historically, I don't...
No, not historically, for this. Why?
And so, it is being split, and maybe I didn't talk about that. So, this is being split by survey, and I actually have the warranty deed here, so it's been recorded. Goshland is splitting that for their ten thirty-one land exchange purposes, and so it's recorded as a lot line, and I'll show you the actual legal description, and I could give this to you, too, for your files, but, so here's the warranty deed that was recorded, and Gosh reached out to have us, have E&amp;A, I should say, write the legal description to match the boundary of the plat. And so, it's a twenty-acre parcel, it's not showing up.
Sure, there you go.
There you go. It's a twenty-acre parcel, so you can record a twenty-acre parcel by survey. So, this twenty-acre parcel has been recorded by survey, and then the remaining Lot One Bruning is to the west of that location.
Okay. Eric, you want to address that, then? When you do your summation?
And I'll respond, was it Clint? I believe. Weston, sorry. I can respond to his couple of questions. Yes, there is a Waters of the U.S. I've attempted to highlight where the actual creek segment is here with the red tree, I'm not a good tree drawer, so, these are lollipop trees. So, with the trees here, what I have cross-hatched are the two locations of, we have water quality basins, which also are retention basins, so, this particular development will retain water to the existing runoff conditions, and so those basins will retain the developed flows before discharging into the creek, so, there will not be an increase in storm flows. So, any other questions I can also answer?
Okay, thank you. Did I close the public hearing? Thought I did. If I haven't closed the public hearing. There's no additional comments or questions? Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, staff does have a recommendation for approval, but as Kyle mentioned, we do have an issue hanging out there that the city is definitely willing to sit down and have further conversations with the developer and his engineering team. It's very uncommon to see a fifty-one-acre ag-platted lot. Most of the time, probably like most of those properties to the west there have not gone through the plating process, and there are tax parcels created that do represent ownership of property, but there is a difference with the plating process. So, that being said, the fifty-one-acre piece known as Lot One Bruning's Edition was platted many years ago under a different jurisdiction. In our report, we are saying that because a portion of that lot is being included in the development, the remaining portion of the lot needs to be included in the plat. We are fine with that, keeping the ag zoning in place for that thirty-one acres, that is quite acceptable. We think maybe it should be an outlot until it is actually further developed, but we can have conversations, outlot versus lot. One of our primary concerns is the southwestern portion of that highlighted area as you approach West Maple Road. As the drainage way in the Waters of the U.S. curves around and as it heads to West Maple there, there is a floodway designation, the adjacent business at the corner of two hundred and sixteenth and West Maple Road, they have many improvements that have encroached onto this separate lot, and therefore have also encroached in the floodway. There are very few things that are allowed in the floodway, and the nature of the floodway is that it is prone to flooding. And so, in our recommendation report, we are saying that the remaining portion of that plat should be included in the plat, and that those improvements need to be removed from the floodway before coming back in for the final plat. I do acknowledge it is unique, as I mentioned, you don't usually have a size of fifty-acre lot with, that's ag-zoned, you just don't come across it. But in any other scenario, we are always saying that you cannot leave out a remnant piece of a platted lot. Another example, you know, if you had two ten thousand square-foot residential lots, each with one home, if one of the owners was buying two thousand square feet from the adjacent property, you don't just plat the one portion, the one guy's lot in the new two thousand square feet, you have to include both lots to move the lot line. I do acknowledge Douglas County Register of Deeds will record many deed transfers, however, we don't believe that that is a proper disposition of that portion of the platted lot, and that the entire, entire lot needs to be included in the plat. So, with that being said, we are definitely willing to have further sit-down conversations with the development team about this, but unless you have any specific questions on it, yeah, Greg?
I've got a question. The, down nearby West Maple, where you said it's in the floodway, there's a business owner there, he's got, I think, two structures on there, maybe? Are those structures in the floodway? And if they are, how would he, how would he have gotten a permit to build them?
My map does not show that area, so I can't exactly pinpoint where the floodway is. His buildings are outside of the floodway, if I remember correctly. The floodway is closer to the creek. There's a lot about that site that is non-conforming. Now, on the corner, it is zoned commercially. Frankly, I don't know the arrangement with the property owner in that business, but that business is encroaching on another person's property. So, I mean, that's a, that's a separate matter for...
How did he get a permit to build, put up those buildings?
I think those buildings have been there since it was under the City of Elkhorn.
Oh, you think so?
I do.
I don't, I don't think so.
Well, I looked at older aerials. Well, looking back at older aerials, it goes back quite a ways, so, I guess I'd have to...
They could have been, but I don't remember them, and I don't think Dave remembers them there either, but...
I'm not blaming you.
It's possible that they were, but, okay.
You know, so like I said...
But if they are in the floodway, that owner's going to have to remove those buildings. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely look into when they were constructed, and, you know, we have old aerials that we can go back and see the progression. It probably started more on the corner, and it has, has grown, whether with permission of that property owner or not.
Yeah, there's a second building, I think, that, maybe the first was there with Elkhorn and the second building, I don't think there's been there, but maybe ten years, maybe not quite that long.
Okay.
Anyways, go ahead. We don't know the exact...
Yeah, and maybe that's part of our further research, and, you know, we're not trying to hold up the development of this project, but it is an issue when you're bringing in a part of this lot that we think needs to be addressed. So, I understand we're dealing with different parties here, but we can't just ignore it and look the other way.
Got it.
So, with all that being said, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R four, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the twenty-seven conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
For approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R four. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the twenty-seven conditions in the department's recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We're taking agenda item number fourteen and twenty-two together, Eric?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda item number fourteen, KC- twelve dash twenty dash ninety-three. Applicant Todd Lieberman for Bryn Shore, request preliminary plat approval of Highlander East, a subdivision inside city limits, portions of the property are located within an ACI overlay district. Location southwest and southeast of twenty-ninth and Burdette Street. And number twenty-two, agenda item number twenty-two is KC-eleven dash fourteen dash two-two-six. Applicant Todd Lieberman for Bryn Shore, request approval of a major amendment to the PUR plan unit redevelopment overlay district. Portions of the property are located within an ACI area of civic importance overlay district. Location southwest and southeast of twenty-ninth and Burdette Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, members of the planning board. My name is Todd Lieberman. I'm with Bryn Shore Development. I'm accompanied here today by our partner, Othello Meadows, seventy-five North Revitalization Corporation. Respectfully, we request your approval of this fourth phase of the Highlander development. It's mixed income, about a hundred and ten units, which will be a mix of walk-ups, elevator building, townhomes, that will help to populate the neighborhood and continue the revitalization of the project. I know that staff has briefed you earlier today on the project, and I'm here to answer any questions you have, and I can go into more detail if required. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Othello Meadows, seventy-five North, we're partners with Bryn Shore Development on this project, just here to answer any questions. Twenty-one twelve North Thirty Street, Street two hundred.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Kelly, did you want to add anything, or, okay. Any additional questions, comments from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so this is, you know, multi-phase projects, a lot of great work being done in this area, very exciting. You know, I don't have a lot to add specifically for the plating process, pretty straightforward. As far as the PUR, we've just got to finalize a few of the plans before they go to city council. There are a lot of partners on this project, so there's different architects and, you know, everybody to work through, but that's part of Kelly's role in helping us out, and there's no large issues that I feel like I need to address. So, unless you have any specific questions, I will take the recommendation for agenda item fourteen first. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat subject to the eight conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
A motion for approval of the preliminary plat subject to the eight conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
For item twenty-two, staff recommends approval of the PUR overlay district, subject to submittal of acceptable final PUR plans, including building elevations for all unit types and a detailed landscape plan prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
Approval of PUR, subject to submittal of acceptable final PUR plans, including building elevations for all type of lands, and a detailed landscape plan prior to city council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We're going to move on and take agenda items number fifteen and twenty-four together. Agenda item number fifteen, KC- twelve dash twenty dash ninety-four. Applicant Michael and Rhonda Peavy, request preliminary and final plat approval of Request preliminary and final plat approval of Peavy Village Estates. A minor plat outside city limits with waivers to sections 5382G right-of-way and street width, 5392 street grading, 5393 street surfacing, including curb and gutter, 5396 storm sewers, 5399 sidewalks, 53910 streetscape standards. Property is located within an ED environmental resources overlay district. Location, west of 66th Street and Twin Brooks Plaza. And agenda item number 24, case C8-20-108. Applicant Michael and Rhonda Peavy. Request approval of a special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location, west of 66th Street and Twin Brooks Plaza. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. My name's Rhonda Peavy. Current address is 4019 North Post Road. I'll be moving into 13334 North 66th Street this weekend. My children are already living there, so my husband and I purchased this property with the intent to subdivide so that two of our children could also build and we'd be in close proximity to each other. So that's the purpose of the application. We have seen the recommendation of the planning board and we are in agreement with those recommendations. We have started to clear the property. It had been overgrown for many, many years, so a lot of wild honeysuckle, a lot of poison oaks, some diseased trees. We have removed a couple mature trees already. We had a tree analysis done and there were about 580 trees on the 10 acres and we're allowed to move about 127 of those without mitigation. We had a wetland study. There are no wetlands present on the, the land. It is sloping. We're working with EGA as our engineer for the property, so we appreciate you taking our application into consideration.
Rhonda, just want to clarify.
Yes, sir.
You said you were, you were satisfied with the recommendations in the planning department's report?
We, we are. I would, I, we're not developers, so I don't really know everything. I don't know if we can move forward with, most of their concern was with the, so Lot 1 is my daughter and son-in-law's lot and they're ready to build when approved. Lot 3 is my son's lot. He will not be ready to build for three or four years, so he hasn't even looked at housing plans or, or anything. And one of the things that the city needs is, and John with EGA is working on the septic plans, but they're wanting that for Lot 3, or Lot, yeah, Lot 3. So Lot 1 is over three acres. Lot 3 is less than, it's just less than two acres, so it falls into that special consideration from the state of Nebraska for that. So I didn't know if we could move forward with Lot 1 so that the kids could start building sooner and, and bring back Lot 3 for approval once it meets those recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Other questions for me?
Don't believe so. Thank you, Rhonda. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak?
I'm gonna leave this up there. Hello, my name is Sandra Cook. I live at 9738 Brentwood Road. I am on, here on behalf of my parents, James and Charlene Camenzin. They live at 13416 North 66th Street. As you can see, the, the property here, my parents live north of the property. The property is located in the Northern Hills area. It's a beautiful area that is really special to the Omaha community. It's protected by the environmental resource overlay. We have steep slopes, heavy forestation, uncultivated grasslands. The Peavy's property right here, my parents' property, and then the third property...
Sandra, do you want to adjust that to, not the other way?
The other way.
There you go. Now it's sitting right with the world.
You can see better.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so my parents' property is north, the Peavy's property is here, and this third property is the Camps' property. These date back to the 1940s. They were originally from an 80 acre homestead that was divided into a 40 acres and then three 10 acre plots, actually acreages. The people that have moved into this area, they bought these homes for acreages. They're all 10 acres and they are really unique to the Omaha area. We were expectantly asked that you reconsider the approval for this division. Based on the letter that we sent, the letters that our neighbors sent, and the following reasons. There was no neighborhood input. They did not reach out to any neighbors. There was no neighborhood meetings. And as you can see by several of the letters that you all received ahead of this, there's the majority of the neighbors are opposed to this division. The Peavy's have already removed several large existing trees. As you can see right here, my parents' home is right here. Lot number one is this that they're proposing. This is the property line. This consisted of mature trees through the entire property. They've removed all of those. And these are, were existing large oak, well, not oak, but pine trees that have...
Pine trees.
Pardon? That have all been removed. That allows direct view from my parents' living room to this house that they are proposing to build. There is absolutely zero privacy. These lots here are narrow and long. We ask that if you at least consider moving, making this house be moved down closer to 66th Street. The idea, idea when these people purchased these acreages was that they had privacy. That's already been removed by removing all of these trees, that they did not take into consideration the placement of this home. We've supported local development in the area. We ask that you, we ask that you protect these, these acreages and deny this request.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, that's good. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I don't. Anyone else have questions?
Not yet.
Nope. Not yet. You're good, thank you. Anybody, any others opposed to this that want to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Rhonda, would you like to come up and...
I would.
...address?
Thank you. Just to rebuttal to what was stated, so we did speak with Mr. Jim. The first time we met him, we told him what our plan was and he said, "They're not gonna let you do that." I said, "Well, we'll follow what the city says." And he never once said he didn't want us to build. He always told us, "They're not gonna let you do that." So it's not that I did not speak to neighbors. We didn't, we didn't hold a neighborhood meeting, no. I spoke to the neighbors. Scott and his wife to the south of us are fine with us building. The neighbor across the street from Scott is fine with us building. I did not talk to the church people. But I did talk to Mr. Jim, I did talk to Scott, I did talk to the lady across the street. So I have talked to neighbors. We have not removed all of these trees. We have removed 14 trees from that area, 14 trees from that area, four of which were diseased. And we have also removed a lot of brush. We have mowed so that the property is maintained. We have, there were two very large dead wood down piles that would harbor animals and, and other disease. So we are cleaning the lot and we're making it nicer. And we have planted what my grandchildren call a secret garden, where we're, we're bringing flowers and native grasses into the land. We're trying to make it look nicer. When my kids first started laying out their, their planned build site, Mr. Jim was upset about where that was going to be, so they moved, they moved their house, their house was going to be right in here. They moved their house forward. We cannot move up to this forward part because that's where the grade is greater than 17%. So this is the highest part of the land and that's where the houses are gonna have to be. Otherwise, it's against the grade and that's why we had to have the special use permit. So we have tried to communicate with the neighbors. Mrs. Jim will not even speak to us. I have never met her in person. She turns her back to me, she will not respond to me. She will not even respond to a five-year-old, so I'm just saying that's part of it.
Just leave it there.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from, from the board before we hear from...
Would, would the board want to see what their house is going to look like? They have a picture. Would that be something that you'd want to see?
Sure, that's all right. If they're here and they brought that information, that's fine.
You want to get up and do that?
Josh Cordova, 1334 North 66th Street. So it'd just be a single-story home, not double-story. That's why...
And that's going on Lot 1?
Lot 1, correct.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Eric? Yeah? So, do you have a specific question or you want me to dive in?
Dive in.
All right. So there was a, just so I can go through these briefly, because there's a lot of subdivision waiver requests, some which are not necessary, some which are acceptable, and some which we are not acceptable too. So I'm gonna briefly summarize that. Regarding the waivers that are not applicable is waiver of storm sewer, street grading and street lights. Those are not needed in this instance. The waivers that the city is acceptable to based on the location being in the North Hills Environmental Overlay District is a reduction to 22 feet in street width, no curb and gutter, no sidewalks. The couple of waivers that staff is not acceptable to is a reduction in right-of-way width, but then the most important one, to not provide hard surfacing on the street. So to summarize, staff is acceptable to a 22-foot wide paved street, whether that's concrete or asphalt, with no curb and gutter and no sidewalks. And that is, those waivers are consistent with the area. Obviously, there are acreage lots and, you know, the homes are on septic systems. It doesn't have the, the standard development lot sizes that you would see in other, most portions of our jurisdiction. We are recommending approval of the preliminary plat in laying over the final plat. The reason for that, and Rhonda touched on that briefly, is proposed Lot 3 is less than three acres in size. Whenever we have septic systems, for platted lots less than three acres, we require Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality to have preapproval regarding the septic and lateral systems. So for that, the final plat is being laid over. There is the special use component, which is acceptable, and, you know, usually we don't get into, you know, moving locations of homes on, on platted residential lots, but I, I can touch on, on saying with the special use permit theoretically, you could do that, but the front portions of the lots do have the steeper grades and would not be, would not be supported. We believe the home locations relative to the, the site conditions and the grades are, are the most appropriate location. Regarding Rhonda's question about leaving Lot 3 out, I suppose you could come back with a phased final plat next month or, you know, sometime in the future planning boards. You know, you, we do phased final plats. It would not include Lot 3 as part of the final plat, but our expectations would probably be that all improvements for the entire site be incorporated into the subdivision agreement. So we can, we can have that conversation. Probably would want to discuss that with Public Works first, but there's, there's a potential route forward for that, so you can touch base with us if, if this proceeds as recommended. So unless you have any specific questions, I can give the report for agenda item 15. I do have to read through all those waivers. So bear with me, you could probably, if, if you choose to recommend as staff does, you could probably say as recommended by planning department. Denial of the waiver of section, and real quick, a few of these denials are because they're not applicable, as I stated. Denial of the waiver of section 5382G right-of-way. Approval of the waiver of section 5382G street width at 22 feet. Denial of the waiver of section 5392 street grading. Denial of the waiver of section 5393 surfacing. Approval of the waiver of section 5393 curb gutter. Denial of the waiver of section 5396 storm sewers. Approval of the waiver of section 5399 sidewalks. Denial of the waiver of section 53910 streetscape standards. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report. We gave you a revised report to add one earlier. And then lay over the final plat to allow the applicant time to address the conditions of preliminary plat approval.
Do we have a motion?
I motion for the same recommendations of all the waivers as the planning department. And then approval of the preliminary plat subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report and lay over the final plat to allow the applicant time to address the conditions of preliminary plat approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Regarding agenda item 24, I should note this, the special use component, and this would not proceed until the final plat does. So if there is modification regarding the phasing, we would also need some updated documentation with this. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval subject to the four conditions outlined in the recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Before we move on, it's about four o'clock. Does anyone need to take a break? Nope. Say what? Lisa does? Okay. We'll suspend for about four or five minutes and... We'll suspend for about four or five minutes and... Can I? If I want to override that and put something... Oh, we're waiting for Eric. Can I go? Is that Eric? Alright.
So...
Okay. We'll get, go ahead and get started. Agenda item number 16. Case C10-2-203 Suite C12-20-98. Applicant Noddle VP1 LLC. Request: Preliminary plat approval of West Village Point Replat 10, a subdivision outside city limits with a waiver to Section 53-99 sidewalks, along with a major amendment to the next use development agreement for West Village Point. Location: Southeast of 175th and Burke Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the city staff, I am Jay Noddle with Noddle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. Here on behalf of our company and Nebraska Medicine. Before I get started, I just want to say that, you know, our community is going through some tragic and horrific times that are oftentimes more important than business. We're very thankful that we can physically be present here with you today, and we continue to thank all of you for your service.
Thank you.
We, I'm going to present the project today, and I just want to say, as we get into this, we have had an opportunity to meet with all the commercial neighbors that we felt were important to touch base with. And over the course of the last 10 days, there's been lots of dialogue with the neighborhoods to the south. There have been, there was a meeting in my office last Thursday with a smaller group of us so we could social distance. That led to a very large Zoom meeting on Tuesday. The neighbors were meeting again yesterday, and I had one person invite me to come out, but when I got there, it turned out my presence really wasn't appropriate or welcome. But suffice it to say, there have been at least 15 to 20 conversations that I have had all myself over the course of these last 10 days. And there are a number of things that we have been able to modify from when the submittal took place. The Public Works Department and the Planning Department are aware of all of these. So as we go through this today, I committed to the neighbors that there are a number of things that I will put in the record. And I just, it's going to take me a little bit of time to do that, but I'll try to go as quickly as I can. So this project is an expansion of Nebraska Medicine's facilities at Village Point. Children's Hospital is there as well. Children's Hospital may or may not expand as part of this expansion project, but they have extended their commitment for the location for the foreseeable future. So as far as Nebraska Medicine is concerned, I'd just like to read this. "Expansion of the Village Point facility will establish this as a multi-specialty care, procedural, and diagnostic hub for Nebraska Medicine. The additional space will allow for the growth of specialty services currently onsite, namely cancer, GI, ENT, and ophthalmology, while also providing room for the relocation of heart and vascular and orthopedic services currently located at the Oakview Health Center. This does not include any kind of emergency room facility, no 24-hour facility. The ER that is at the Oakview facility is not Nebraska Medicine's ER. That's the orthopedic group there that operate that facility." So I just want to be clear that this doesn't include that, and our plans for the project don't include that. Children's, however, does have an urgent care facility there that's been operated for a long time, and there are no modifications to that facility currently planned. So with that... You guys all remember, I don't see very well. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to get here, Ron. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to shift, Ron. If you will let me use the overhead, I'll just do it that way. And Lisa, maybe you could tear these for me, or turn these for me. So this first slide is the current... How are we going to get this big drawing on here?
Can I try to look for this?
Yeah, you can.
Use the table with the larger...
Oh, it does?
Yeah, yeah, to get a larger view.
It's not going to get to the top of my head. So this is the current condition. And Noddle Companies with our new LLC acquired Lot 10, Building 111, and Building 110 in January of this year. The Med Center, actually Nebraska Medicine, currently owns the Med Spa property. And the first step in this process is to replat this into one lot so that we can have a comprehensive campus for the center. One of the big challenges of the facility today is the patients oftentimes have to travel between the two buildings. Parking is pretty well-balanced. What happens in reality is someone will go to the West building, the 110 building, or they'll go to the Med Spa building, they check in, maybe they have a consultation, then they've got to go to radiology. That's over in the 111 building. So they get in their car, they drive back, they drive over there, they park, they get out of their car, do what they need to do there. Then inevitably, they wind up having to go back to one of the other buildings. The driving, one of the driving principles of this is to improve the patient experience. And there's really two important elements to that. Ease of access and proximity of patient parking to the buildings, and having everything under one roof. So the continuum of care can be handled under one roof. The patient can move throughout the facility undercover without having to go outside. So...
Jay, I put this up.
You do?
Yeah.
You guys all know that I'm not part of the technology era now, right?
You can just use the down arrow.
The down arrow, okay. So I put this in here because this, the neighbors haven't seen this. This is the original plan and the landscape plan that's part of the required submittal documents for the Planning Department. Things have changed a little bit since then, but I haven't had the ability to show them the landscape plan. I've told them that as far as landscaping is concerned, at this stage of the process, we know where we want to put landscaping. We've committed to putting the landscaping there, but we haven't necessarily picked all the species. I've also indicated to them that we'll be using Kinghorn Gardens to help us with the design, the installation, and the maintenance of the landscaping. The other thing that this drawing shows is full build-out, maximum potential. And I do want to point out that the FAR allowed for, that's floor area ratio, in this location is 1.0. Our proposal is 0.5. So we're well under the maximum FAR. The other thing, though, is when you see the next slide, everyone, and everyone has seen, the neighborhood has seen the next slide, it has a smaller garage on the east side. We found a way to make that garage a little bit smaller. It's important to note, and I'm going to go back one. Can I, if I go up, can I, okay. It's important to note that there is a parking lot on the south end. I don't think this pointer's going to work. But below Lot 10 is an L-shaped lot that goes around Building 111. There are 211 parking stalls, 222 parking stalls in that lot. I misspoke to the neighbors. I thought there were 311 parking stalls in that lot, but there are just over 220 there today. That lot exists today. It's used by some patients and some staff. We will be converting that to a permanent staff lot. And as we go forward, you'll see how the connections or lack thereof between the other parking lots and the buildings work. This is important because patient parking, which is where all the car trips normally are, that won't be located adjacent to the neighborhood. So this is the overall illustrative site plan. For the neighbors, this is changed overnight to include the quantity of trees that are on the submittal document. We just didn't have all the trees on the illustrative plan, and I can tell you that there are over 150 new trees that will go in. So what you see is a connector building that connects 111 and 110. It is a full basement, which will allow for some parking, but it will also allow for ease of materials and deliveries, medical supplies and whatnot, to travel back and forth between the two buildings, actually, between all three buildings. And there will be loading facilities that are currently in the 111 building on the north end and in the 110 building that will remain. We won't be adding a third loading facility, but this basement will allow us to take care of materials, to put a few functions in the basement that don't want to be above grade necessarily, and so forth. Then there will be two full floors connecting the buildings, and a half a floor will be on the third floor, in the middle. The east garage will, at grade, be patient parking. I should back up. The east garage is grade plus two. It fits into the, kind of the valley there. There's a big grade change, and so we've got it tucked in. It's not very tall. The upper level will be used for staff parking, and the surface level and the second level will be used for patient parking. We're maintaining some patient parking that, on surface, that exists today. This is where oncology and radiology are. So real ease of in and out is super-important for patients that have those kinds of needs. The West building, the 110 building, is where the children's facility is, and they take up the majority of the building. Their entrance is on the south side of the building, and it is, it's where their urgent care facility is. So the plan is to maintain the east entrance off of Burke. That today is full movement. It will remain full movement. It will provide direct access to the 111 building and the east garage. There is no connection between the east garage and the surface parking lot to the south. So those 200-plus stalls, there's no connection whatsoever, and that's on purpose. We really don't want patients to park there. We think if we organize the site this way, it will absolutely minimize the number of patients that might travel through the neighborhoods to the south. Really, unless you live in the neighborhood to the south, it would be sort of curious why someone would go that direction because you'd have to come out of the garage and either hit Burke Street or come through the parking lot, and then around on a new roadway, 176th Street, and to Nathan and into the neighborhood. That's a long way to go. And we just think that we've really been able to minimize that impact and actually lessen the impact.
Jay, can I ask you a real quick question?
Sure.
With regards to that. So getting into the parking garage there, it looks like there is an entrance in to that garage off of Burke Street there. Is there a median along Burke Street that would allow traffic going west to come into that garage? Are they going to have to go all the way around to the...
No, that is currently a full-movement, signalized intersection, and that will remain.
Is that the one right across from the theaters?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And let's do that. So then the next entrance, where 175th Street is today, which is the roadway that would be vacated and replaced by 176th and Nathan. That today exists, it's not signalized. The Public Works Department has made a recommendation that that be a three-way intersection, which, by the way, we're fine with. And then to the west, there'll be a new intersection built, full movement, signalized, coordinated with Madonna, so that should Madonna want to use an entrance, for whatever reason in the future, they can tie right into that. And then that roadway will be built to city standards, and it will be 176th turning into Nathan and connecting in to the neighborhood. I should say that 100% of these public improvements are privately funded. There's not been a request for any city resources to upgrade or change any of this. And the right-of-way that's being vacated, as compared to the right-of-way that's being created, is almost identical. So there's really not, there's not really any financial consequences there. So back to where I was. The idea is that the patient parking is convenient, staff on top. No way, no physical way to get from the garage to the south parking lot, which is only a staff lot. In the center, in front of the connector building, will be patient parking. To the west, what this, I mentioned earlier, this illustrates full build-out. We're not going to need to build this west garage anytime soon. A portion of this building will be shell space for a while. And until that shell space is going to be occupied, and we don't know when that'll be, there really won't be a need for this west garage. So it will happen last. A new development today, and some of the neighbors are aware of this. Today, the Med Spa building sits in what will be the 176th Street right-of-way. And up until this morning, we felt that we might be in a position where there wouldn't be access into the neighborhood during a significant portion of the construction cycle, mostly because we couldn't take the Med Spa building down until we had a place for those folks to go. Then that building can come down, and we can build 176th Street. Then that building can come down, and we can build 176th Street. What we've worked out with the med center and Public Works today, and we know we'll need to continue subsequent to your action here today before final approvals with the council. We will have an interim plan that will allow for access to continue between the neighborhood and Burke Street while we are relocating folks from the med spa building. Once those folks are relocated, which will now be sooner in the construction cycle, we'll take that building down, and we can go ahead and build 176th as well as Nathan real early in the process here. So, they'll have full access on a new roadway into the neighborhood. And all we want to make sure of is when we do that, we want to keep safety in mind so that the construction project doesn't conflict with their safe passage through that area.
This is an important point, I think, of issue here. I want to make sure that, that I understand this. So, are you gonna allow traffic to continue to flow on 175th Street while you're constructing the new road, which was named, I can't remember the name of that?
176th.
176th Street. Are you gonna allow free flow of traffic to go in and out of the neighborhood on 175th Street during that construction process?
We'll have a three-
And, and you said an interim plan, so what is that gonna?
Well, we're gonna have a three-phased, this is gonna go in three phases. First, as we start to do site prep work, so long as Public Works will allow it, 175th Street will stay open. Once we get to the point where 175th Street probably shouldn't stay open for safety reasons, there'll be some kind of an interim connection. We've committed to that. We haven't worked it out yet. So, we have to, in the, in the weeks ahead, we have to figure out the pathway for that interim connection to meet standards that Public Works is comfortable with. And then right after that, 176th Street connecting to Nathan will be built. And I think it's possible we can start that work in the spring.
And does interim connection mean a paved street? Does it, does it, does it provide for enough access for fire?
Yes, absolutely.
To go through?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I can't tell you, it'll be concrete, Mr. Pate. I think it'll be asphalt.
Asphalt.
But it'll, it'll meet all the standards and guidelines that the public service, or that the Public Works Department requires for public safety and for life safety services. Absolutely. We don't want, and this is a medical facility. We don't want to do anything that deteriorates the public safety, health, and well-being. So, we, we have to just work out this interim route.
And, and, but again, if you're going west on Hunter, or on Burke Street there, there's no curb cut there off 175th Street, right?
Yeah.
There is?
Yeah.
To get in there?
Yeah. That's the main entrance today. That's the roadway.
Okay.
One thing that we may have to do at, we might have to open the median somewhere. And again, this will be Public Works.
That's what I meant, a median cut, a median cut. If you're going, if you're going west and you want to go south on 175th Street.
You can today.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if, as this gets shifted, and it's likely to get shifted to the west on an interim basis, so it would be somewhere between the current 175th Street and the new 176th Street, we might have to break the median in there, and we talked about it this morning with Public Works. Again, it's all on our dime, which is probably less important at the moment. What's most important is that we work out something that's functional and safe for everyone. So, we're gonna do that. And we know that at the end of the day, we have to, this preliminary plat is, is acted upon by you folks and then the council, and then we're back for a final plat here and at the council. So, we know there's gonna be plenty of opportunity to be working with everyone and get this worked out. Our commitment is to get it worked out and get arrangements made for this immediately. So, we're gonna go to work on this, what we already have. So, this demonstrates full buildout, and the things that are a little bit new on here that the neighborhood hasn't seen, there was a request from the neighbors. We see the two yellow dots, and there's a note there that those are no left-hand turn signs. The neighbors have been concerned that the staff who would park in their lot.
Jay, I, you might be pointing on your screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you see two yellow dots? Or are you colorblind?
I'm a little colorblind.
There's two little yellow dots. Is there a mouse here? Okay. Here we go.
Oh, there we go, okay.
There's one.
All right.
So, here's our staff parking lot.
Yep.
And I should also mention, there is no patient entrance anywhere on the south side of this building. There will be staff entrances, and there will be emergency exits. So, the staff will park here, but there's been a concern that the staff might want to take a left and come through the neighborhood. So, we've agreed to put an no-left-hand turn sign there. Same thing, the basement of the connector building, the entry is here, and there's a concern that the staff, and that's staff parking as well, no patient parking, that the staff would maybe take a left onto Nathan and then go through the neighborhood. We're, we're totally fine putting no left-hand turn there. The neighborhood has asked about the possibility of stop signs, traffic calming devices in their neighborhood, traffic trays, speed trays and speed bumps. They've also inquired about the, the ability to make this a gated neighborhood. What I've told them is that we support all of that. Those issues are really Public Works Department issues. Probably the biggest challenge, I guess, would be a gated community, 'cause that's a, a, a public right-of-way through there. I believe this project, the way it's laid out, will discourage people from wanting to travel through the neighborhood. You gotta, you gotta really want to go into this neighborhood if you're parked on the north side of this, and for sure, if you're parked on the northeast side of the project, you gotta really want to go into that neighborhood. And if you really want to go into that neighborhood, maybe you live there, or maybe you're trying to get to Hy-Vee, you know, go through the neighborhood to get to Hy-Vee. So, I think we've done what we can to design a site plan that will not only minimize, but probably lessen the desirability of driving through the neighborhood. The other thing that this site plan shows is an eight-foot walking trail on the neighborhood side of the roadway. We have found that the, the people that are out walking prefer a wider trail as opposed to a four-foot sidewalk. So, we asked Public Works if it would be okay, if we kind of consolidated that, put it on one side. I think that's, there's a positive recommendation for that in your package. Something new, last night, when I was out meeting with the neighbors, or attempting to meet with the whole group, and then I, I talked to a few of the neighbors while I was there, and I had several phone conversations throughout the night and again this morning, we have decided that it's appropriate for us to put a really nice fence on the south side of that walkway. So, we're proposing a steel six-foot-tall fence, very similar to the fence that's on 105th Street between Pacific and Center, protecting Happy Hollow Country Club. So, it's a very nice fence. I think it'll provide the security they're looking for, and it'll be very durable. The other thing, another thing that came up from a few of the residents, today, there is some mechanical equipment right here that serves the 110 building. And so, there were a handful of questions that were asked, some of them operational. One was, would there be a medical waste incinerator here? Today, there is not a medical waste incinerator here, and there are absolutely no plans for that in the future. There is not enough medical waste generated, nor will there be, for that to be incinerated on-site. So, that is all picked up and taken to another location for incineration each day. There was a question about generators. There is a generator here today for each building to bring the building down when we lose power. That will, this project will require a generator to do that for the connector building and smaller generators for the garages, and they'll probably be combined. Those, the location where those will go is yet to be determined. We've talked about garage-related power generation being contained in the garages, and the connector building generator can be in the connector building, and it can be in the basement of the connector building or up on the roof. We just have to figure out where the easiest place to put that is for service. It's not the kind of generator that some are used to that has to be fired up once a month and tested because there's a big computer operation or something like that that's dependent on it. What it does need to be able to do is allow the building to come down slowly. Procedures need to be able to be finished, and we need to be able to clear the building in a safe manner. This mechanical equipment, I think, is a source of frustration for some of the neighbors. I stood on a deck last night. I can see why it would be a source of frustration. It's been there since the buildings were built. So, you'll see in a minute an image. We've developed a, a plan to screen that equipment. It's one thing to screen it, it's another thing to buffer the noise. So, we don't know yet how tall that screen wall will need to be to effectively buffer the noise, but I'm showing it. We're committing to it. We'll do it. I just need a little bit of time with our engineers to study the configuration of that, but we'll use the same materials that we're using for everything else. The last operational thing, I think it's the last operational thing that's come up so far, is there are deliveries to the buildings early in the morning, and when the trucks come to deliver things, they back up, the trucks beep. It's just, it's disturbing to the neighbors. I have found out that one of the deliveries that takes place in the morning are the surgery packs. So, the surgery packs are prepared off-site, and every day, whatever surgery packs are necessary based on the procedures that take pla, or plan to take place that day, they're delivered. We're working on, can they be delivered a little bit later? We're also working on, is there a way to deliver them where the truck doesn't have to back up, and therefore it doesn't have to beep? And can they be delivered in a different vehicle? And I just don't have those answers yet, but I want the neighbors to know that I heard them, and, and we're looking into it. Trash was the last one, in terms of pickup. We think we can adjust the pickup times for trash. If that's something that's bothered the neighborhood, 'cause the dumpster lid is banging at whatever time it is in the morning, I know I wouldn't like that, and I'm su, I'm confident that our trash haulers will work with us to adjust that. So, those are, those are some highlights. As far as the project is concerned, this is how we look north, looking to the south. You see the two full movement access points circled, one here, one here. This one exists. This is the current main roadway. That's 175th Street today, and this will be the new access point. I think it's important to recognize that we're early in the process here. We, we are gonna use building materials. Some of you will be happy to know that are a match, as best we can match 12-year-old materials with what has already been used there. So, I think the aesthetics will be really nice. The garages, we don't know what's gonna go on the garages with our application. We submitted, I think, four examples of how garages are screened, and I'll show some here in a minute. We haven't landed on one yet. It's a little early for that, but certainly our commitment is to screen the garages as best we can. Another view, we don't think at this point there's gonna be a need for a covered drop-off here at the connector building, similar to what the Durham Research, or the Durham Outpatient Center has, or Lawrence Outpatient Center, because the patients that, that need to be dropped off, more often than not, are likely to be going to the 111 building and using this entry point. But to the extent it's determined we need to do that, I think we have a design here that'll accommodate that pretty easily. This shows the fence line. So, there's a couple breaks in the fence because of the roadway. It's not intended to have a lot of brick columns, although where it's necessary to have brick columns, sort of at, at points of origin and, and where it bends, we'll have a brick column there that matches the materials we use on the building. Here's some images. So, again, it's materials that are a pretty darn good match with what's there. This is the south side, and what I wanted to show here were the trees. And then here, the top image is the southwest corner of the west building, and you see a label there, new screen wall. That's where the mechanical equipment and loading dock is today. So, we'll bring a wall out and we'll screen that, and as I mentioned earlier, I just don't know how tall that needs to be to be effective to knock the noise down. I don't want to do something that looks great but isn't effective with the noise. The bottom image, I don't think anyone, I know no one has seen yet, that's the fence, and you see the, you see the sidewalk here. First stab at illustrating the trees that will go along the fence and really throughout the project. Again, we haven't picked the species yet. These trees will be significant. There'll be some instant gratification. These are not gonna be sticks. These will be as big as, as a practical matter we can relocate to the site and know that they're gonna live. And here's some ideas, and, and please, no one, I'm, I am not suggesting that any one of these is what we're gonna do here. This is rather methodologies of what can be done to screen garages, and we're just going to work on it now. I kind of prefer something that'll be green 12 months a year, but we'll have to play with that a little bit. You may know, you may recognize the bottom right, that's at Exurban Village, and that's starting to come to, together pretty nicely. So, that concludes my presentation. I don't think that I've left anything out based on what I've heard from the neighborhood. As far as the project's schedule is concerned, there's a critical date, 24 to 26 months out, and the, the first new occupants really need to be up and operational by then, or there are, there's a risk that there could be some service delivery challenges in the western part of the city. We wouldn't want to lose, we wouldn't want groups that are being relocated to be out of, out of business for a little while here. We want to maintain their service levels. So, that's where we are. Again, we are, we want to be as transparent as we possibly can be. We want to work with everyone. This is an important project for a lot of reasons. Certainly establishes a greater healthcare presence in the western part of the city, and the other thing it does when it establishes a greater Nebraska medicine presence is it, it kind of makes the, the choices in the western part of the city equal with CHI and the Women's Hospital and expansion, and expanded Nebraska medicine services. The community should be able to get most of the same services from their favorite provider, their preferred provider, by expanding this facility. So, those are my remarks. I will sit down unless there's any questions, and I think I can reset this in case, I guess you gotta just do it this way in case anybody wants to use it.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Come, yeah, come on forward, give your name and address and...
Thank you. My name is Kelly Barrett. I live at 17610 Douglas Circle. Thank you for taking the time to hear my opposition to this project. The first thing I'd like to, to comment on is that Mr. Nadel referred to some meetings that he had with us. I have a request that we table this proposal at this point in time. The meeting has consisted of a, a meeting that was requested by our homeowners association board. We found out about this quite honestly, and this is a major proj- We found out about this quite honestly, and this is a major project, and we found out about this on around the 20th of May. You know, there was precedence earlier today where there was a project on 72nd Street that, you know, the developers had talked to the neighborhood like six months out. There was a little bit of argument about it, but it appeared that there was some communication six months out. There was no communication from the Naughtle Corporation to us with regards to this project. So significant concerns there that I don't think you're hearing on behalf of the neighborhood because, quite honestly, we haven't had time to formulate our concerns. Yes, we've expressed some, and yes, he's done a nice job of responding to them, but, you know, there's many more things to discuss. I mean, this is a big project that affects a lot of people. The second piece I would like to bring up is around this, one thing that was not mentioned, and that's around street closure. So not once in the presentation was it mentioned that 175th Street will be closed. Mr. Rosenbaum, you mentioned earlier that the city owns the streets and needs to protect them. He's trading a piece of property, yes, giving the city a street at 176th Street that's undevelopable. So you're, we're giving him prime real estate. I mean, that's a, it's a full acre, 700, I'm sorry, it's 46,000 square feet donated to this project. So I would ask that the city please reconsider this proposal as it is and not close 175th Street. The last piece I will say is, is that currently in the project, there's one neighbor that has traffic, knew they would have traffic, bought the house having traffic at the corner, basically of Douglas Street and entry into the project. The rerouting, as it's called, or the closing of 175th Street will now move traffic by 12 properties. I bought my property never dreaming that there would be a city street behind me. Now I'm going to have one. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Senator Robert Hilkman. I represent this district, and for full disclosure, I am also a resident of Village Point Estates. That is going to be greatly impacted by this process. It's very difficult for me to come here to say, "I don't think this project should happen," because this is wonderful economic development to our district, but at the same time, it is going to be a huge imposition to the neighbors who have bought and have built their homes here over the years that I've been there. Let me begin, we talked about, I'm a state senator, I try to keep up on things. I learned about this project at 6:00 last night because I chose to go over to the project. I did not get any kind of notice from the city at any point down the line. I guess, they said there was something in the paper, I guess I'll sharpen my eyes, I missed that one. But at either rate, I'm concerned about a couple of things, the project in general, closing 175th Street. When I bought my home there, and I'm just going to show you, just for those of you who are not from, let's see here, how can I get this?
There you go.
Okay, all right, all right. This is our, this is the entrance to our neighborhood. Down here is, is, down here would be Burke Street. You come up, we've got this nice roundabout there that acts to slow down traffic. Actually, when I bought my property, I checked and I said, "Had they ever considered putting gates, making a gated entrance in there?" And they said, "No, the city won't allow gates in this because it has to be a through type of street." And of course, if you look at it further, you get a little closer, we got a little nicer, this is just the cul-de-sac itself, roundabout, and then we actually have a monument there indicating that this is Village Point Estates. This all goes away, folks, there's no identity to our project that we've, that we have here at this point. Then I was concerned when I learned about this, and Mr. Naughtle has addressed this just a little bit today, but my first thing that got my cockles going on this was is that this is the building that he's talking about building right up here. If you can see the, I kind of put this in red, this is the blocking off of 175th Street. For the project that's going on, and we're talking, he's talking, he said two years, yeah, two years. This is, this project's probably going to go on much longer than two years. And then, secondly, what happens is during that process, and he says he's going to put this street, I don't know whether that'll happen, but if not, there's 42 lots, there's over 100 residents that live in this district that are going to be dependent upon one small block and a half of 175 to remain open at all times. What about a natural disaster or catastrophe that would block that? That's the only entrance at that point into Village Point Estates. Are you sure our fire department, our police department, our rescue units on board for this? I can tell you, having lived there, that there have been times, there have been street flooding, and when we've had major rains and floods right down here, right below at that area of the golf course there, so there's an actual stream there. So I think that this is a big concern. It certainly, safety is a huge concern for me. And so those are some of the things that I, that I wanted to put up, to bring out. I would like to see an alternative plan, one that does not involve the closure of 175th Street. Thank you. Are there any questions that I could?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any others that want in opposition? Come forward, give your name and address, please.
Cindy Ruma, 17528 Douglas Street. We were all a little bit surprised by this when we got the information. It came in a pretty poor format. Fortunately, Mr. Naughtle was able to submit documents that we could read, what the city sent us was totally illegible. It was just not a decent document. So it took us a little bit longer to get organized as a neighborhood. We've had, I'm the president of the HOA, and I've had some meetings with Jay and my, and some other people. We realize that this is going to happen, but in reality, in our dreams, of course, we'd like to see 175th Street open and not have a new street running behind those houses. The traffic estimates from the traffic study was about 500 cars a day. We, well, just about double that with those, with the staff parking lot going through If we can't keep 175th Street open, and we've talked about this, he knows we've talked about this, our dream would be to not have staff access to that lot from 176 through Nathan, that it would come through the north side, or the, yeah, the north side where Burke is. I'm a nurse, so I don't, these plans are a little foreign to me. So, and so that's kind of where we're, what our final thoughts are. He's been gracious about working on the other, on the other items, but since 175th may or may not be able to be kept open, we'd like to see that parking lot shut to access from the other street that could come in from that direction. Does that make sense?
Sure. Thank you, Cindy. Any others, any other opponents that wish to speak? Come on down, sir. Yeah, you can come down, take a seat here.
My name is Tony Chacon. I live at 17631 Douglas Circle. And I will say this, Jay's already talked about the response that he's made to us, and it has been, he's taken the ideas that we've come up with, and he's tried to follow up and come up with suggestions. But as Cindy said, this is a huge project. We got almost no notification. We have a lot of other ideas of things that we think should have been looked at, and maybe they were, maybe they weren't, but we just don't think that we can respond, you know, with nine days' notice. I'm an engineer. There's an old saying that when you have a hammer, everything looks like a nail. Well, it looks like that's what they did here. They wanted to connect the two buildings, so take 175th Street out. There are other ways to do it without blocking 175th Street. Now, I happen to be unique in our neighborhood in that I have two properties. I'm in the process of building a new house, and we put ours on the market about 10 days before the announcement came out. And part of putting your house on the market is you have to fill out a disclosures statement. And it asks, "Are you aware of any government notification that there's going to be any changes?" And we said, "No, as far as we know, there is not." Little did we know that now we have to change our notification. So just from the standpoint of selling a house and telling people that for the next two years, you've got this construction that's going to be going on there, I mean, it's all of a sudden come to home for me, and we don't live right on that, against, backed up to the construction. But for the folks that do, and there, as was mentioned earlier, there's a house that's just finished in construction now, I mean, he had no idea that he was going to have a street going behind him. And so we really think that we need an opportunity to spend a little more time with Jay, really understand what other alternatives they looked at, and to see why those can't meet the needs of the Med Center and still proceed with the project. We support having the project, we just do not support 175th Street being closed.
Thank you. Anyone else? With new information, I hope?
I'm trying to do that. I'm not, hopefully not going to be redundant, because in my courtroom, I won't allow anybody to do that. My name's Gary Randall. I reside at 17516 Douglas. I'm the third house in from 175th, and my backyard is the current medical buildings. We fortunately have a pretty decent buffer, you know, somebody planned that before I bought that house, and that's fine. And we knew we were going to have semi-commercial neighbors, the same uses that the medical center will make of the property, you know, as, you know, as Jay is talking about with his, with his project, and I don't object to any of that. What I object to is the closing of 175th Street. If you want to leave Village Point Estates, you have to drive through Pacific Springs to get out if you can't use 175th Street. We have to go down 175th to Harney, and, you know, you go to 180th or 168th. And those are both pretty significant stretches, you know, that you've got, you've got to get through in order to get back to Dodge, get back to 168th. There's no other way out. So I really think that with the notice we've had and the neighbors' willingness to talk to Jay, and he's been responsive, you know, I'm not complaining, I'm saying we need to try to figure out if there's some other option, because this is a really drastic encapsulation of 42 homes, that by the way, are probably somewhere between $500,000 and $800,000. It's not like we're, we could bulldoze them all down. We're pretty significant tax entities for the city of Omaha. So I would appreciate if you would take the request of our president, or our vice president, Mr. Chacon, excuse me, and let's continue this out and try to figure out if there's a way to do something else, because closing 175th is really drastic, and we really don't want to have that happen. Thank you.
Gary, real quick, question for you, maybe you don't, Gary?
Gary, I'm sorry.
Yeah, real quick, and you've all talked about this a little bit, but you brought up Pacific Springs, so I've got a question with regards to traffic from Pacific Springs. Do you guys know if you have any traffic that comes from Pacific Springs through that area to get to Village Point?
We do.
From 175th Street?
We absolutely do.
Do you?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Thanks. Thank you.
Any other opponents? Let's let everybody else that wants to speak. And please, if you've got new information, we've got, getting some things that we've already heard, so if you've got new information, I would appreciate that.
Just a couple, couple comments, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Schaefer. I reside at 17504 Farnham Street. I'm also a lawyer here in Omaha. My office address is 100, 100 Farnham, so I work on Farnham and I live on Farnham Street. Lawyers are concerned about two things. Due process is one of them. This afternoon, you heard that some plans were formulated this afternoon. We had no notice of those, and we have a right to have that information so we can appropriately respond to it. So I see that as a due process violation of the homeowner's rights this afternoon. The second thing is, this is purely and simply private business trying to acquire public property for private profit. It's, that's it, pure and simple, and I don't think that justifies the closing of 175th Street. That access is critical not only to our Homeowners Association, but as you just brought up, Pacific Springs, which I was, which I was going to also indicate. So thank you for your time. We'll take any questions.
Thank you, Jim.
Hi, my name is Chuck Stevens. I'm at 17628 Douglas Circle, and my comments are just more maybe informational, to make sure the full context is being understood. I think you've heard that we support the project overall, you know, a little concerned about the timeframe of it, but I think we can address that in certain ways, and probably want to set Jay up for his closing comments a little bit. One of the things to know about the whole entire subdivision, if you go bigger than what we see on the screen right now, and you take from Pacific to 180th to 168th, if you go down 180th between Dodge and Pacific, there are three major significant entryways off 180th. If you go on the 168th side, there are three significant entryways coming off 168th. Pacific happens to have three as well. There are a couple minor ones that go off at two, but I'm talking significant notable entryways on and off those major streets. Currently, on this street, there is only one that cuts through the neighborhood because of the elevation changes south of Village Point. A lot of the houses sit up, so they couldn't cut a road through there. This is the only street coming off of, out of Village Point into that neighborhood. So, you know, it is interesting that I could actually get behind a little bit, that traffic may decrease, because closing 175th, yes, but being rerouted to 176th, which also, by the way, we're moving a little bit further west, so, you know, you're talking three, four blocks, get it. But it's important to note that there's only one way into Village Point from the north and off of that whole mile of stretch of road compared to three on every other road around it. The other thing I guess I'd like to point out is, and Jay, we can work this one out too, there is the children's urgent care on the backside right now that would be patient parking, so there is some non-staff, I don't, I don't know if it's going to change that, we can clarify that for you, you can clarify that for us later on. So there is some patient parking that's going to go on back there, so I think it's important to note that in the big context of things, there is an access point issue here that I think is important to take into consideration, so thank you.
Okay, Chuck. Any others that wish to speak in opposition? If there's anyone else that wants to speak, you want to raise your hand, and if you do, come on down and take a seat in the front, which will help speed things up. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Rachel Reader, 17522 Douglas Street. And one thing that has not been mentioned with the whole street issue is the gentleman before talked about going out on Harney, 168th Street, past Pacific Spring Golf Course, that there's a traffic light there. Our other choice would be if there's no 17, no access out for a while, is to take Harney to 180th. There's no traffic light there. That already is a horrible intersection because 168th Street is closed because of, for the year, because they're widening it from Pacific to Center, or I don't know how far south they're widening it. So getting out onto, onto 180th Street now at that intersection is really quite dangerous because the traffic backs up from Pacific Street, or Hy-Vee even, all the way to Center because 168th Street is closed. So we're already dealing with that right now and will be for the next year until 168th Street opens up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
I'm Mark Tilwick, and I live at 17527 Farnham, and I just want to reiterate, and I know this is nothing new, but I'm totally against closing 175th Street. But what I wanted to follow up on, on this drawing here is, in this employee lot that Jay is talking about, so here's what would be left of our entrance to our neighborhood. There's going to be 212 or 220 cars, whatever the number is here, that at shift change, whenever that is, around 8:00 in the morning and 5:00 at night, there's going to be 212 cars trying to go straight through this intersection. So that's going to significantly eliminate, limit our ability, I don't know if there's a three-way stop sign here or what we're, what he's proposing, but that's going to be a significant amount of traffic trying but that's going to be a significant amount of traffic trying to go straight through here and limiting our ability to get turned left onto Nathan Street. And the same way in the morning, if we're trying to come through here to get out of our neighborhood, we're going to have 220 cars coming in roughly at the same time when they're coming to work. So the solution that Jay doesn't support is to put these cars, close off this parking lot and have these cars enter and exit at this, what is already an existing lighted intersection, which seems to make perfect sense to everyone in the neighborhood. Move those cars in and out through here. And whether he can address with gates or whatever, limiting this to staff parking only so that patients aren't getting back here. So it seems to make the most sense to close this off if this project is going to go and we lose access to 175th Street. Close off this parking lot completely. Flow the cars out on 175th Plaza here where there's already a light. That reduces the amount of traffic that these folks have to put up with behind their house and gives us better access without all the traffic from the employees coming and going. That's all, my only point.
Thank you. All right, any others that wish to speak in opposition? Seeing then, I'll close the public hearing. Jay, did you want to come up for some rebuttal time?
Thank you, Jay Naudle, 2285 South 67th Street. I'm gonna, I hope I have all this down. First off, putting a, putting a three-way stop here is not objectionable at all to us. As far as the project's schedule is concerned, I think someone made the remarks that they don't believe we can do this in two years and that will be done. We have a long history of meeting our deadlines. And so I really don't foresee, absent some world catastrophe, which is well beyond this project, I don't think we're off on our schedule. We'll get it done on time. With respect to cutting access off for the neighborhood while we're under construction, what we said at the beginning here today was we've worked out something with Public Works so that there will always be access. We're not going to cut off access, we're not going to close the road and not open a new road up for an extended period of time. We will put a temporary roadway in, if that's what we need to do, while we're making preparations for the new roadway. Just not going to happen that there won't be access. Now, having said that, if a utility company comes along or the Public Works Department comes along and there's infrastructure that's got to go perpendicular to a roadway, then, you know, if something may be closed, just like any other roadway in the city for a pipe project. We will endeavor to do all of that ahead of time so that when the pavement goes in or the asphalt goes in, we don't have to come back and interrupt that. As far as leaving 175th Street in place, there isn't a way to meet the physical needs that the Nebraska Medicine believes their patients require under one roof if we leave 175th Street there. It was suggested yesterday and it has been suggested in the past. And we have studied what would happen if we tried to build a basement that would connect 111 to 110 and then build, put 175th Street back over the basement, put the building over the top of that. That is, that's certainly physically doable. It's definitely not affordable. And it would not meet the contiguous needs for patient flow throughout the facility. Because the first floor would be separated by a roadway. And designing something like that is a lot more difficult. And operating something like that is a lot more difficult than it is to stand here today and talk about it. So we don't see a way where we can effectively connect everything and move patients and keep parking distributed where parking needs to be distributed to meet those patient needs without replacing the 175th Street right of way. As it relates to us being given the 175th Street right of way, that's really up to Public Works. We're asking to abandon that right of way, we're going to give back another right of way. We've done some measurements and I can tell you that the distance from here to here, the driving distance is about 800 feet. This piece is the same as this piece. So in terms of driving distance, we think it's 800 feet or less additional driving distance. Sidewalk wise, it's also 800 feet longer to walk down the sidewalk. Our situation is this, we know there's more dialogue to have, we welcome the dialogue. I think everybody knows that we'll attend, we'll listen first, we'll respond as best we can. We have no problem continuing to work with Public Works and the Planning Department on any of the issues. But we would like you to approve the project, subject to, or approve the preliminary plat, subject to the staff recommendations from both the planning staff and the Public Works staff. So we can keep the process moving. And there's plenty of time to have dialogue. As I mentioned earlier, there's essentially four bites at the apple here. One today, one with the preliminary plat at the council, then we're back with the final plat. And then we have to go to the council with the final plat. And to the extent that, you know, people aren't comfortable with our availability or our responsiveness, or they just don't like it, they have at least three more forums here in this room with you and the council.
Jay, can you address some of the concerns a lot of the opponents raised with regards to lack of communication or meetings that you had? And maybe it's because of COVID, I don't know, but can you address that?
Yeah, it was almost exclusively because of COVID. We didn't have a way to convene a meeting. We were a little bit hampered in our work with the city. We had a number of meetings, we actually had a couple of social distance meetings with both the Planning Department and the Public Works Department. But we just weren't there, mostly because things are just so difficult to accomplish in person these days. As soon as the notices went out, we were on top of it as best we could be, knowing full well we need to have some dialogue and there are, this is an extended process. And you know, I would just say this, it wouldn't hurt if the information provided by the department maybe had a little more meat to it. And I don't know what it would take to do that, but the neighborhood got, and we've heard it a couple of times today, the neighborhood got one sheet. We were more than willing to share anything that's in the application. And I know there's a lot of great reasons why you don't share the whole, you know, the whole beefy application. But giving the neighborhoods a little bit more of a jump start, I think could be helpful to.
Could you have done that, could you have done that through the HOA? Instead of having meetings, could you have provided that information to the?
You know, we could have, we could have. And frankly, we didn't, we were busy, we didn't know what this project was going to be until just before the submittal. And we focused candidly on as many folks that we could identify. And the minute we got information as to who was in the neighborhood and who to talk to, we were right on top of it. I don't think anybody went more than about 24 hours without a phone call from me or a text back the minute we knew who they were. And the gentleman from Pacific Springs hasn't been here today, I don't think I saw him here today, he didn't speak. I've had several conversations with Pacific Springs. I mean, it must be somewhat acceptable, at least to that gentleman, because he wasn't here today. So we're trying as best we can, we have an open door policy, it'll continue to be that way. And, you know, we're available. And they've demonstrated to me that they're available. I've talked to, like I said earlier, I think I've had 20 phone conversations.
Jay, can you respond to the question about the staff parking and access?
Yeah, so I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, there aren't a lot of shift changes here. This is kind of a limited hours facility. There's no overnight stays or anything like that. So I don't think there's big shift changes. I think they're staggered. Maybe the shifts or the staff arrives between 6:30 and 8:00 in the morning and they leave when they're done in the afternoon, which is not the same time every day. So that's the first thing. The staff and the patients already park in this lot today. It's there, they park there today. There's the same amount of traffic going into the lot today as there will be tomorrow.
But it's a right turn out instead of a cross.
I understand that, I'm just saying that the traffic is there today. Gary Randall mentioned that behind the West Building where Children's is, there is parking there today, and that's right, there's no parking there tomorrow. There's 31 stalls there tomorrow. So that parking lot changes quite a bit. Has a roadway and a sidewalk and green space going through it. I don't think we're going to have nearly the volume of parking back there tomorrow when the project is complete than we do today because we're shifting things. Terms of connecting the garage to this parking lot, I'm not going to tell you it isn't possible. It will take some study.
I mean, the north, not necessarily the garage, but allowing the staff to have some entrance to the north.
To the north.
Do it, whether you go on the east side or?
I'm losing you a little bit. I think, I think what they're talking about is can we connect this lot into this garage and close this off?
Yes.
That's what I think I heard. It will take some work to find a relatively simple way to do that. The grades don't match, we can solve the grades not matching. Then we have an operational issue we need to deal with because we've got to get the staff all the way through that lot, through the garage and into that lot, and then we've got to get them back all the way out through that. And I recognize that there is a concern about what happens if everybody leaves at once. It will be a lot easier for the project to move everybody out. If everybody left at once this way than getting everybody through this garage and down and out. We'll look at it, it's a tough one. It was not connected intentionally because we always felt that the very least, there has to be a way out over here. I think we might even have an issue with the fire department if we don't have some access here. Now, maybe that's restricted access. But if there's an event right up here in the garage or over here in this parking lot, they have to be able to get there without going through the garage because their equipment won't come up through that garage. So it's something we can look at. It's nothing, it's not something that I'm absolutely close minded to. We'll work on it, we'll look at it, we'll talk to the user groups. And in this case, it's just the Nebraska Medicine because the children's folks, their staff won't park in this lot. It's not in proximity to their facility over here. The children's staff will park up here and back here in these 31 stalls, I think it's 31.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you, Jay.
Okay.
Eric.
Well, I would start if you do have any access street issues, we do have Public Works here, both in Ryan Haas and Director Stube.
I do, so can I bring up, you want to, okay, so, Ryan?
Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department.
Hi, Ryan, so obviously, you know, there's a lot of issues to deal with here regarding access points and what have you. But I want to think forward a little bit. I worked close there, I see all the traffic that goes by that area quite a bit. And on Burke Street, it's becoming more and more congested and it gets really congested during the holiday season as well. So my question has to do with whether or not we look at 176th Street or 175th Street. Because as that area continues to develop and there's more and more traffic, it's going to be harder to get in and out of these businesses without lighted intersections at some point in time, right? So do you know, can Burke Street support a lighted intersection at 175th Street? Or is it too close to the other traffic control intersection just a block away? Probably is, I'm guessing.
I would say that's probably too close.
Too close?
At the speeds and volumes we see there, it'd be better to have more spacing between signalized intersections.
Then my second part of that, would it support a lighted intersection at 176th Street?
There's the potential there, yeah.
That's not too close to that intersection to?
We would want, and that's part of the recommendation, would be to modify, I'm going to call it vacated 175th, where there's currently the full movement intersection. That would be concerning having that many full movement intersections in a row, two of which would be signalized in that scenario. So our recommendation would be if we do end up approving this proposed plan with a signal at 176th, that our recommendation would be that 175th, the vacated 175th, be restricted with a median to still allow left turns into the site here and left turns into the site on the north, but to prohibit outbound left turns. And instead, those would go to either one of the signals.
So is there a cross street, if we looked at 176th Street, would there be a cross street going north into the Madonna?
That ultimately would, and as Jay alluded to, it ultimately would be up to Madonna if they would want that connection to the north side of what would be the new 176th and Burke intersection. That's something that they could pursue separately on their own. Otherwise, it would just function as a signalized T-intersection if that's what ends up being approved.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I think that whole Burke Street corridor is, I don't know, I think that it has potential of really getting congested there. Because then you go down a little bit further west and then you've got Corbank and you've got the Pitch Place and you've got another, a lot of office buildings to the west of that. And that's probably going to, at some point in time, going to need some sort of a traffic control in there just because of all the volume of traffic going into and out of there. So I'm a little concerned with the flow of traffic.
Yeah.
And when the hospital and when Med Center, if they go through with this, how much traffic is that going to bring to that particular area with Madonna there too? And I don't know, you know?
So are you saying if I parked down by, like in front of the 110 building and I wanted to go west, I'd have to go all the way up to the entrance by the east garage to turn left?
That's correct. And there would be an interim condition also where prior to the West Garage construction, Jay alluded to, that would be service parking? Is that correct, Jay?
Yeah, I'm sorry, if you want to go left, if you want to go west.
West on Burke.
You'd go to the existing full movement in front of the other.
The other option would be either some kind of interim connection to 176th through the area that would ultimately be the West Garage. Or once that's built, they indicated in meetings that there would be wayfinding signage in the West Garage where it would be clear if you wanted to go west on Burke or towards 180th Street that they would provide that signage so you could access 176th on the west side of the West Garage, which you can see there on this.
From parking in front of 110.
Correct.
So you'd be able to cut through the West Garage.
Any other questions?
No, I missed, did you say yes, you could cut through the West Garage to?
Oh, that was a question, I'm, I'm sorry, so can you say that again?
So if you parked in front of 110, that you could cut through the West Garage to get to 176th and turn left?
I would defer to Jay on that.
We can call. Jay, come back up, please.
The way it's designed today is, Jay Naudle, 2285 South 67th Street. The way it's designed today is based on the conversations we've been having with Public Works. What we would be willing to do is extend this so that they could come straight across. What, what we would be willing to do is extend this so that they could come straight across and exit here. And then this is full movement.
Well, we-
Wouldn't that be-
Is that too close? I mean, is it, Public Works isn't gonna allow you to have it?
Well, there was some, there was some issues about congestion right here. What we're trying to do is design this so that we're not putting a lot of additional stress here, which minimizes overall the number of people that use it and, and whatnot. But I, I would have no problem making that connection. This is, as I mentioned earlier, this is the last piece of this that will get built, this garage. And so we've got plenty of time to lay this out in here. And if there's a requirement to make that connection, we'll make it.
Does that answer your question?
It is. I don't know if I like the connection or don't like the connection. I don't know.
Go back to Madonna for a second. I just wanna be clear that Madonna has approved this new intersection right here. It's up to them whether they wanna use this as a replacement for this, which is not signalized, or if they want this to be an additional connection. That's totally up to them.
They would have to build a, looking at the diagram here, they would have to build a street down to use that.
They'd have to connect into this parking lot.
Yep.
And their expansion is on the north side of their campus. Having been a resident of Madonna, as is a few other people around here, there's, Madonna's not a big traffic generator at all. Not, that's not the nature of their facility. They do have late-night arrivals and that happens on the north side of their building. But we, we intentionally have designed this, at least preliminarily, so that should they desire to connect to it and have their Burke Street entrance be signalized, absolutely fine. I don't know if I answered your question about-
You did.
Okay.
Now then, any other, further questions or comments before we hear from Eric?
Go ahead, Eric. Yeah, I don't have too much to add. Briefly, wanted to touch on parking. They are, the developers proposing a similar parking ratio to what exists there today. The use is kind of a combination of, of medical office as well as limited hospital services. So the current ratio they have is one parking stall per two hundred and fifty gross square feet. And with the proposed full build-out, it would be a similar parking ratio. It was briefly mentioned that, that there is a sidewalk waiver on the north and east, east side of proposed Nathan and one hundred and seventy-sixth Street. We are acceptable to that provided that the south side is that wider eight-foot trail, you know, tree plantings. There is a required buffer yard between the residence to the south and that proposed street. So I did just wanna touch on those two items.
Eric, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you know how wide that street is, that new Nathan, one hundred and seventy-sixth?
I believe it would be the standard, either fifty to fifty-three feet in right-of-way width. Now, it's a little bit shifted because you would only have the sidewalk on one side and with increased landscaping on that south side. So I, I believe it's either fifty, fifty-three feet, somewhere in that range. The actual street would be twenty-five feet in width, which is your common street width. But the, but the right-of-way, what's, what's actually part of the right-of-way would be the common local street designation. Now, it would increase slightly as you get to Burke Street to confer any potential turn lanes and Ryan would be better equipped to answer those specifics. But for the majority of the length of that, it would be the standard local street.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just, I thought I saw fifteen on the plan.
No. I guess outside of that, unless you have any specific questions, we do have the sidewalk waiver. There is the preliminary plat and then there is the major amendment to the existing mixed-use development agreement. So we are recommending approval of all of those at this time. As Jay mentioned, there would need to be the final plat that comes back after preliminary goes through planning board and city council. There can still be discussion, you know, the final plat wouldn't necessarily have to be on the administrative meeting only when it comes back. You know, there can continue to be public hearing. Just throwing out the, those potential options. But unless you have any specific follow-up questions, I'll read my recommendation and we can go from there. Approval of the sidewalk waiver to the north side of one hundred and seventy-sixth Street Nathan Avenue only. Approval of the major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement subject to submittal acceptable plans prior to forwarding to city council. And that would not be until the, the final plat. And then approval of the preliminary plat subject to the seven conditions listed in the recommendation report.
Before I ask for a motion, I just wanted to say to the homeowners, usually, nothing has ever happened to change my opinion that when Jay Noddle says he will work with you and continue to talk with you. I realize because of COVID-nineteen, there's been, Jay normally would've had meetings well in advance. I realize what's happened to shorten this process. But when Jay says that he will work with you, talk with you, Jay will do that. And so I don't want you to feel like the train's on the track and it's going and there's nothing that you have for, you know, to change or add any input. Jay Noddle, as you've seen even today, is willing to, is willing to work with everybody. So that's all I wanted to say. Do we have-
I would like to make a comment too. I don't ever take the closing of a street lightly. It's not without precedent. We have done it for private enterprise and, and it concerns me. I, I understand the concerns about having a street right behind your house when, that it wasn't there when you moved in. And something that we talk about a lot is being consistent and trying to make sure that, you know, people have the ability to go look up what's zoned around them, what could be built around them. This one, I'm not sure anybody saw coming. And that concerns me a lot. The only thing that makes me, gives me any comfort in it, I will say, is that I think Mr. Noddle does a good job of working with the neighbors. I hope you will continue to do that and understand the concern of suddenly having a street behind your house and the city closing a public street for a private building. I think there is a little bit more work to do. I, I don't think they've been incredibly unreasonable and I, I think you've been very reasonable as well in what you've given so far. And I think that will continue to happen and I just hope that it will, and I hope we'll see that before you come back for a final plat.
Chris did spend quite a bit of time in our pre-meeting talking about what she just, what she just talked about where nobody saw a street coming, that Nathan Street coming in and people that own homes there and the concern that Chris has and the, the board has for that. But thanks for, Chris, for bringing that up.
I think I, excuse me, I'd love to just add to that, that this is a very unique situation in trying to expand on something that had an initial plan that didn't include anything like this. And the complexity of trying to do that and meet all of the transportation needs and all those other things is, is quite a, quite a challenge. And I think maintaining the flexibility that they've shown so far should give you comfort that, that going forward in the next stage, I'm sure he won't be closing the door and that he'll be, he'll be talking with all of you as much as you need. Does that mean you're gonna get a hundred percent of everything you get? Probably not, it's not the world we live in. But this is a vital project, I think a very good project for the community and for the area. And so like, again, I just hope that you'll find comfort in, in the fact that he will work with you to the best of his ability to try to meet your concerns. And with that, do you wanna?
Yeah, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk waiver for the north side of the one hundred and seventy-sixth Street Nathan Avenue only. Approve the major amendment to the mixed-use development for West Village Point subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use devi- or district development agreement prior to forwarding to city council. And then the approval of the preliminary plat subject to the seven items noted in the staff report.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
So I'm just gonna comment now, you know, I agree with everything Chairman Rosenbaum said and, you know, two board members said completely. I, I do. Worked with Jay many times on projects. Neighbors, I appreciate you coming out and, and voicing your concerns because that means a lot to us. For me, I just, I can't get there yet with this project just because of some of the issues with regards to traffic and, and all of that. And I think it's better to get the issues addressed in the preliminary plat stage than it is if we have to go forward and make changes going forward. Because I know you're in a time crunch with this, it sounds like, Jay. So with that, I am gonna vote no. Not because I don't agree with the project, because I really like the project. I'm a pro-development guy. I just think for me, there's just too many issues in my head that I just can't get over with yet at this point in time. So I'm voting no.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carons?
Uh, no, just because I'd like to see more of it worked out before we do the preliminary plat.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
I'm gonna vote yes, but Jay, don't let us down. Because we, you're gonna be back here for that.
Motion approved, four to two.
Yeah, this isn't final, right?
I don't think he will let you down.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number seventeen. Case C-ten dash twenty dash seventy-seven, C-twelve dash twenty dash seventy-five. Applicant, City of Omaha, request preliminary and final plat of Smelter Plant Replat Two, a subdivision inside city limits with a waiver to section fifty-three, four D lot frontage along with rezoning from HI to CBD. Properties located within an ACI area of civic importance overlay district. Location northwest of Interstate four-eighty and the Missouri River. And Eric, are you presenting?
No, we have, Chris, you might as well.
Oh.
Oh, come on, give us a little summary. You waited this whole time.
We'll hear from the applicant.
Yeah, not the, not the two-hour version, please.
I, I can match you any day. Chris Koenig, HDR Engineering, address is nineteen seventeen, Sixty-seventh Street. Again, this is part of the riverfront project, which we've had before. A lot of this has to do with when the riverfront, I mean, the Lewis and Clark Landing was remediated back in the nineties and the riverfront drive was put through there. There was not a right-of-ways designated for that, and so that is one issue that needed to be addressed or this Public Works has us to be addressed as part of this project. Also, we needed to address the flood wall. The flood wall, city has, the Corps has very specific requirements as far as protection of the flood wall and making sure that's all in place, and that was not in place at the time. And so this replat also addresses that, expand, it provides that protection for that flood wall. And then also for the future development site, Lot One, that designates that area. Now, the city will maintain ownership of all this property. It's, again, it's a, it's part, it's part of the Massacre remediation, and so that does have to stay in place. So all this will remain city property. But they did wanna make sure we addressed all these issues. And then also that with the zoning, with the proposed buil- building that's gonna go in there. Right now, it's zoned heavy industrial and that's not allowed. So we are going with the downtown zoning with the ACI overlay. Without, is there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now, Eric.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, I don't, I don't have much to add. Obviously, Lewis and Clark Landing, rezoning CBD. Chris had mentioned the, the need for the lot frontage waiver for the outlot, which contains the flood wall and then one of the lots that's adjacent to the river. So obviously, we're acceptable to that lot frontage waiver. It'll be an exciting component of the project, includes a discovery center and play area. Think it'll be a, a great addition to our riverfront landscape here in the years moving forward. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from HI to CBD. Approval of the waiver of section fifty-three, four D lot frontage. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the four conditions in the report. Approval of the final plat subject, subject to an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary. I don't think it is necessary prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
A motion for approval of the rezoning from HI to CBD.
Approval of the waiver of section fifty-three, four D lot frontage. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat approval and submittal of an acceptable agreement, final subdivision agreement.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carons?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number twenty. Case C-ten dash twenty dash one oh four, C-ten dash sixteen dash two eighty-nine. Applicant, Steve Geyer, PMR Realty Group LLC. Request rezoning from AG and DR to DR with approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development plan for Fountain Ridge East. Properties located within an ACI overlay district, location northeast of one hundred and ninety-second and Burke Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent Beller, one-one-four-zero, on behalf of the project applicant. My co-mas still here as well. We should have like a, a number system though. If you agree to hold your thing to three minutes, you go first, but that's okay. Really, the only reason we're, we're here, we pulled this off the consent agenda because this development in connection with the amendment to the mixed-use agreement, we have some particular signage that we're a little sensitive to. Because we're, this is out on one hundred and ninety-second and Dodge. Our monument signs are actually gonna be along Dodge Street. Normally, as you guys know, we have those along the full access. And we have actually three of those, arguably three of those. This is one right off one hundred and ninety-second. The other is as you come down this intersection. And then the third is full access as to us. So we have talked with staff and really all we want to do is just confirm perhaps on the record that we're okay, we're having these two center identification signs. But then we can, we're gonna work with staff and hopefully get a third identification sign down here at this full movement. So I'm not sure, Eric, how you wanna do that, but really our, our goal was just to have something on the record that says we'll continue to work with staff to see if we can get that third sign because we have the three full movements. And again, these signs are not full monument signs, twenty-four inch, twenty-four feet. These are actually seven feet. So we're not even using all of our allotted sign requirements. So with that, that was the request, and Eric, I'm not sure how you wanna handle that for, from your standpoint. That's it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll bring it up. Any other proponents that wish?
I have a question. So are you comfortable with what's in the recommendation report?
We are, subject to hopefully what Eric confirms.
Okay.
That's why I'm here.
Make sure we vote, the way that we're supposed to. I don't know, I guess I'm a little bit confused to be, to be perfectly honest, so.
Really?
Maybe Eric will make it clear.
Well, and, and if he doesn't, maybe I'll, I'll interject again. But again, we want three monument signs. Right now, your recommendation report, staff is saying we can have two based upon the two full movement inter- intersections here. We're saying we actually have three because as Burke Street over here, this is full movement as to us. And so we can technically have three. If we have three full movement, we can have three signs. That's why we, we have, we propose one, two, oh, I'm not up there anymore. We have the three, one, two, and then this is the third.
Okay.
And again, identification signs are supposed to tie in, hate traffic, this is where the sign is. We have these two on Dodge Street, but, but again, because we have a, we're, we're buddying a major arterial street, we need additional signage, which is what we're having here along Burke Street when this is fully constructed. So that's really what we wanna confirm is we'll, we'll be able to further those conversations so that hopefully we'll be able to get that third identification sign.
Okay.
By working with staff.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Less confused.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opon- Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so just to reiterate and mention from the city side of things, typically, a neighborhood identification sign would not be allowed on that northern portion, because there is no full access movement there because of West Dodge. Based on the type of signage that is being proposed, and there are renderings in your packet, there's no specific tenant signage, you know, for individual businesses. They are more of a monument-style size, rather than being the allowed twenty-five-foot neighborhood identification size, height, which is double-sided usually, yeah, as shown on the screen there. You know, based on the visual appearance, the type of sign, the low profile, we are acceptable to allowing them along West Dodge in this circumstance. Because usually, they would be required at the full movement intersection, which is on the east side at the roundabout, and then on the south part in the center on Burke Street. Burke Street's popular today. And then the southwest corner is a three-quarter movement, and so when Brent's saying that's a full movement to them, it's similar to our previous case when we're, there's going to be a, you know, a limited turn that can't be done at that location. So rather than three full movements, there's two and three-quarters full movements. We are acceptable to further dialogue in the future. I can't make any promises as we sit here that a, a third, you know, center ID sign can be allowed, but we are definitely, Director Fanslaw and myself had conversations with Brett's coworker, Larry Jovan, about this. And, you know, we are definitely willing to have further conversations as this development proceeds and, and building, and whenever that additional sign on the south is requested, or, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely sit down and have those conversations. Another part of, of this request is there is a rezoning from AG and DR to DR. Currently, the outlot, which is where the fountain and the signage are proposed, one of the signs goes over to the east on the ag unplatted portion. That's a future phase that's accounted for in the mixed-use development agreement. This rezoning would make, would move that DR zoning for the entire outlot, and then we would, subject to that approval, approve an administrative subdivision to adjust that lot line over a short distance so that the sign is fully on a platted outlot. So, that summarizes the request, but I can definitely say that we're willing to have those further conversations with the applicant, whenever that may be. So unless you have any specific questions for follow-up, we are recommending approval of the rezoning from AG and DR to DR, approval of the major amendment to the Fountain Ridge East mixed-use development agreement, subject to submittal of five acceptable signed final copies prior to City Council.
Do we have a motion?
AG and DR to DR, approval of the major amendment to the Fountain Ridge East mixed-use development agreement, subject to the condition in the department's recommendation report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thanks, Eric. No. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We've got one more agenda item, number twenty-seven. Case C-seven dash twenty dash one eleven, C-ten dash twenty dash one twelve. Applicant, Omaha Public Schools. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in the R-four District with a waiver to Section fifty-five, one eighty-six height, to allow a sixty-five-foot tall building, along with approval of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay. Location, fifty-eight, ten, South Forty-second Street, northwest of Forty-second and Y Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Chris Turner from RDG Planning and Design, thirteen oh two Howard Street, and I'm here representing OPS. This is a proposed middle school, and let me put a- Proposed one hundred and eighty thousand square foot middle school that will house between eight hundred and fifty to a thousand students when it opens. It is located adjacent to, or just south of existing, existing elementary school, as well as an early learning center along Forty-second Street, and adjacent to, or just north of Y Street. The, the school will, at this point, have parking from the, or access from X Street here, and that's for primary automotive access, and bus access from Y Street here to the west side of the building. There is also currently an existing wetland that, as part of this project, for now, will remain existing, and any future work on that portion of the site would be, would have to go through planning again. The long-term outlook would be for that to include a track and field as well. So overall, we're looking to increase the, or pull student population from other middle schools into an area of Omaha that has continued to grow, not quite exponentially, but significantly over the last several years, and serve a need for the community in this location. Do you guys have any questions at this point, or do we need to get into specifics about what's, what all is in the, the project itself?
Any questions for Chris? Don't think so. Thank you, thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? As a proponent?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Tim Fonfara. I reside at forty-four sixteen Washington Street. I was actually pleasantly surprised with the proposed site, because the biggest fear with the residents in the neighborhood was the reextension of Y Street to Forty-fourth Street. As far as my knowledge was, the, the city had closed that off back in the seventies to deter traffic, which made it much more private there. I do have a recommendation. I will put this up here if you can see. This is the cop, copy that they sent us in the mail. My concern is that there is a fence line that is along the property. My property is right here. So Forty-fourth Street, it's not indicated here, but it, it starts or ends about right here. And Burlington, Northern Santa Fe has a railway that is in immediate proximity right here. There is an open gap in the fence line right here that's incoherent with the west fence line. So you can literally go to the end of the property there, and you can sidestep to what is now OPS property from my property. And the condition of the fence line is also in very poor condition. I do have some, some photos to give you a rough idea, if you'd like, that the, the structure, the integrity of the, the structure of the fence is in parts that are just completely deteriorated. I've had issues with trespassing, and, and if you can imagine this, pretty, not hard to imagine, but random people showing up and, and trashing the place. But the city public works had also put in a storm sewer access point on my property that's back there, right, approximately right here. I've always cooperated with, with the city and letting them have access to that. So if they would need access from my property to go and repair and, and update the fence, they're more than welcome to. I can't speak on behalf of the rest of the property line here and what the condition of the fence is, but from my side of the property there, it's in pretty poor condition. And from what I've seen over the years, and because of the railway there, I don't think anybody wants, in common sense safety, kids wandering over to the railroad there. So it would be probably necessary to, to close the gap there and update the fence. But other than that, it's a great proposal. I was pretty pleased with that, so.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions? Eric?
Yeah, so conditional use permit with a height waiver, and then also approval of the MCC overlay. Our notification for the MCC overlay was incorrect. So out of an abundance of caution and, and keeping in line with state law, we are recommending to lay over the MCC overlay. That will not slow down the project. The applicant doesn't even need to come next month regarding the MCC overlay. We will put that component back on. But it, there's not going to be any impact on timing of the project. That was more a staff error, and we apologize for that, but we just want to make sure that we're doing things the right way. So we are laying that over. The height waiver, most of the building consists of a height between thirty-six and forty-eight feet, which does exceed the residential zoning height limit of, of thirty-five feet. However, based on the, the civic site that is being proposed, we are acceptable to the waiver. I should say there is some, there is a portion that exceeds to, to go up to sixty-five feet for mechanical screening wall and parapet, so that's why that dimension is higher, but that's not the majority of the building. Chris did mention that there is some wetlands on the site that we will have to work through if there are future impacts to that area. We are comfortable with what's being proposed at this time, to not have to address that at this time. But any future expansion of track and field would likely require a major amendment, and we need to work through those wetland mitigation, whether onsite or offsite. Outside of that, you know, there is an improvement of, a portion of Y Street to go up to their access to the site, and working through any of those improvements with the final approved traffic study as a part of the condition in the plat, for number four, provide all improvements identified in the final approved traffic study. So unless you have any questions, staff is recommending layover of the MCC overlay district, approval of the requested waiver to Section fifty-five, one eighty-six height, approval of the conditional use permit to allow secondary education facility, subject to the ten conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Move for layover of the MCC overlay district, and approval of the requested waiver to Section fifty-five, one eighty-six height, to allow a maximum sixty-five-foot tall structure, and approval of the conditional use permit to allow a secondary educational facility in an R-four district, subject to the ten conditions outlined in the recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Before I ask for a motion on the pre-minutes, let's just sit here for a while. Do we have a, a motion on the pre-minutes from the May meeting? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion on the public minutes for the May meeting?
Okay.
It's been motioned and seconded. Please record the vote, Lisa.
Pete?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion for adjournment? Please record the vote, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, adjourned five fifty-two PM.